Standing to the pledge to our nation's flag.
This is not mine. I think, excuse me, before I begin the invocation, you don't mind I say a few words?
Please do.
Eh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My, so of my history. You can sit down. Okay?
Well, are you gonna pray?
Yet, you're not yet. Not yet, sit down, sit down.
Okay.
I want to say a word about my history here in Beaumont, okay? You will see why.
Okay.
I came to Beaumont, or I'm to the United States, in nineteen forty-nine. It was Christmas Day. When I went to visit the bishop, was Bishop Noel, asked me if I was coming to work in Beaumont. I didn't know the Beaumont existed at that time. My work was to be organist, okay, play the organ on the choir of Our Lady of Guadalupe in Porarthur. But, one month before I came to Porarthur, a priest from Puerto Rico came to Porarthur to Our Lady of Guadalupe, and he was organist too, so he took my job. So I lost my job. Now what? I had nothing to do. So I been, I been to think what happened in Beaumont. The bishop asked me what, if I are going to work in Beaumont. Why, why, I don't know. So I began to see what was going in Beaumont, and I found that was a Spanish families without priests. So, I think and think, and God told me, write to your superior to change his mind. So I wrote to my superior, I gave the salute, I mean, the problem in Beaumont, and he said, okay, you are destined to Beaumont, go to Beaumont. Okay, so I went to Beaumont, I told the bishop, he was really happy to have me in Beaumont. So he told me, go to Beaumont and begin to say the mass in our house, anytime, immediately. Okay, so I been, I went, began the mass, still here, the mass still, I mean, the house still here, in Beaumont. And, celebrated the mass, what, I think it was October nineteen fifty-one. That is the beginning of the Church of Cristo Rey. And now the mystery, why God wanted for me to be in Beaumont? That is the problem. The answer, I have a big book here. Please, yeah. I have a big book here, Laren. Laren is my little town in Spain. About, now it's about eighteen hundred people only. It was biggest before, in the thirteenth century. But, this is the mystery. Why God wanted for me to be in Beaumont? The answer, in my small town of Laren, eh? The king of Navarra, Spain, remember Pamplona is the capital of Navarra, rolling of the bull, you know that? And declared, the king of Navarra declared a man from Laren County, it was a big title, and his name was Luis of Beaumont. Well, move, you say in Spain, Luis Beaumont, in my little town. So it was I have some relation with Beaumont, but I want to say this thing. It was in the century, thirteenth century. This is my relation with the city of Beaumont. This is why God changed my life. My service says go to Porarthur. The superior sent me to Porarthur. And now God is, no, you are going to Beaumont. So I, I am Beaumont. The county of Laren of Beaumont, Luis of Beaumont, but Luis, my name is Luis too, of Beaumont, had a big history in the new Spain, in the thirteenth century. And so I have seen in Beaumont happily for so many years. Twelve in Cristo Rey, I built the church, et cetera. Eleven years in San Antonio, and then I was a few years giving retreat with national team of movement, but very warm. And now I'm here, having in Beaumont, but I think, my, in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-seven, I came back to Beaumont again, and I am here, still here. Fifty-three years in Beaumont, and I am only ninety-nine. Wow, wow. And I am happily to be in Beaumont until, God knows. So this is my life, my history here in Beaumont only. And I have this big book, Laren. It's a little town, but look how they have beautiful churches, baby, we have everything. Wine, oil, anything. So.
We're very glad you're here, Father.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here in Beaumont, and I happy living in Beaumont until I don't know when.
So, can we stand now, or are you gonna pray for us?
No, can I?
Not yet?
When I, yeah, I think you can stand. I have another prayer for the crisis. One before, okay, one to three before, okay? Then I send the invocation, anyone? In the Catholic tradition, we ask the Mother of Christ to intercede for us, and knowing that she has been named Mother of the Continent, let us pray to this Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Pray for us, loving Mother, and gain for our nation and world, and for all our families and loved ones, the protection of your holy angels, that we may be spared the worst of this illness. For those already afflicted, we ask you to obtain the grace of healing and deliverance. Hear the cries of those who are vulnerable and fearful. Wipe away their tears and help them to trust. In this time of trial and testing, teach all of us in on the war to love one another and to be patient and kind. Help us to bring the peace of Jesus to our heartland and to our homes. We come to you with confidence, knowing that you truly are our compassionate mother, health of the sick and cause of this joy, of our joy. Shelter, shelter us under the mantle of your protection. Keep us in the embrace of your arms. Help us always to know the love of your Son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen. Now I'm going to say the prayer, a small invitation. Oh God, in your wise providence, you are glad to bless all human labor, the new work of our hands and of our minds. Grant that all who plan and conduct business in this office may through your guidance and support come to right decisions and carry them out faithfully for the well-being of the residents of Beaumont. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Sorry, my eye has not do good. Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I take some times.
No, you're welcome, thank you so much.
Okay. Yeah, it's on.
So, before we do the pledge, I would like to call the council member, Tom, you wanted to make some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to acknowledge the legacy and the life of Representative John Lewis in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please bow. Amen.
Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under our, indefensible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father, and pray for the members on. And we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protim Felshaw. Councillor Neil. Councillor Getz.
Present.
Councillor Pete. Councillor Samuel. And Councillor Muton. Here. Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any presentations or proclamations today, so I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak on scheduled agenda items one, four through ten, and the consent agenda, that's one, four through ten, and the consent agenda. Items number two and three have already been heard in the joint public area of the Planning Commission and the City Council, so are not available for comment. Council, before we allow the citizens to speak, I would like to pull the first item on the consent agenda. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip and hand it to the city clerk, or hand it to the officer, we will hand it to the city clerk. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. That's for items number one, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and the consent agenda. I will open up the microphone at the end of our meeting for anyone who wants to speak on any other item, and we don't have any other comments, so.
Omar Orfin, seventeen forty Thomas Road, by my Texas.
And please state the item you want to speak on.
I'm sorry, it was item number one, my apologies.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and respected gentlemen, for giving me this opportunity. I may go up a little, you know, many, few more minutes than three minutes. The, this all started from our, what was decided last meeting to open up the city venues. And of course, I'm not an expert or epidemiologist who can tell when to do what in the city, but I want to bring in to attention, in front of all of you all and whoever is listening, what from our side we are dealing with. I have Dr. Hancock, and I would like her to make some comment after a few things which I have to say, and all of them are very, very important. As you all know, you know, six months ago, we did not know that we'll get hit so bad with this virus in our town. And of course, most of you all know me, and the people who don't know me, my name is Kamara Orfin. I'm a board-certified pulmonary critical care internist and came triple boarded from Beaumont. And the reason I'm in Beaumont, because my wife of seventeen years is born here, was born here, my three kids from her are born over here. So this is my, my town, my hometown. What we have, we are right at brink of a healthcare crisis in Beaumont. We are hit so hard by COVID, and with sick patients occupying all of our emergency room with nowhere to go at present. We have come to the point, then we have, when we have used a last ventilator, and we are short of manpower. And my fear is that, God forbid, if this thing gets any worse, it will be a disaster. We, on daily basis, have anywhere from ten to twenty admissions in all hospitals. And just for people who do not know, you know, my group, we take care of all the COVID patients at Baptist Hospital. One-third at Christus Hospital, and all of them in Jasper Christus Hospital. Me being an intensivist, I take care of all the patients in the ICU, and, and it has been a challenge. They are, when people get sick and when they are in the ICU, they have, they have a very different course. Their road to recovery is not easy. Even if they recover, they go home, that they have another challenge from getting better altogether. So, so we have, we have a dilemma over here. First of all, what do we do in terms of opening up the town, or when are we going to open the town?
Counsel, I don't object to Dr. Orfin going over a little because he came from the hospital to talk with us. Does anybody have any problem with that? Okay, go ahead, please, Doctor.
Thank you. I believe it's important.
Yes, sir.
The, so that's not my expertise. You know, I'm surrounded by very intelligent people with, who are, who have a great responsibility on the shoulder. So that's where I do not know what to do at what time. But I want to have a question, of course, and, and the thing which I want to bring for people to hear, you know, that we, everybody I see in this town is fighting their own battle. The hospitals are, the city is, everybody is. Everybody has a challenge, not one person is getting affected, we all are, okay? One thing I do not know, who's our local general? Who I can go to and say, look, you know, I got this issue, I got this problem. I don't have doctors to take care of the patient, I don't have nurses to take care of the patient, I don't have medicine, I don't have whatever I need. And, and in reality, is, you know, we have these counts and these numbers, how many ICU beds, CETRAC does, and everything, that all makes sense. But who in the trenches taking of these people who cannot breathe? And that's when they come to the hospital, and truly, if it does not affect any, anybody's family who's sitting in this room, it's all okay, it's just a number, it's a story, and it's a story till we get the next story. We have a crisis, Ms. Mayor. And we believe it's time for all of us, people who are fighting this individual war, to get together and have a plan, what we're gonna do. We do not have, a fatality rate is very low mainly for one reason. Because we have not out, we have not gone, you know, it's just like a water rising. And we don't want to ride that high, that a dam breaks one day, and we do not know what to do. People will die in the emergency room because they cannot be attended to. We, we'll be living with this virus for a long time, and, and, and we do not want to have that surge of too many people sick at the same time. If we have more admission coming at this, in X amount of time, within a week, there's no way you can take care of them. People will die, and in countries, you know, you all, you all well aware, people are dying in backseat of the car because they can't even get an ambulance, forget the, forget the ventilator. So we do not want that to happen, and I can go over stories after stories, which will terrify people who are listening to me. But at this present moment, we have, we are, we are barely making it. True, we're barely making it. Many times, we have come to the point that we have used a last ventilator. If had another patient to be intubated, we have to manually bag them. So we have to take this thing seriously and do whatever got to be done to be, to, we don't have that crisis, then we are losing people who can be saved. Of course, you know, death is gonna come to all of us one day, but it should not come because we did, we did not make the wise, right decision. So that's all what I've got to say, and I want to thank you all of you guys to hear what I have to say, and I'll be very, you know, happy and privileged to come again if there's something more, or you all want any, for me to talk about anything in detail. But in summary, I just want to bring, because we do have a crisis in our hand, and, you know, a lot of people may walk away because it's not affecting them at this present moment, but I've been seeing this thing for past five months firsthand. And, and I'm sure most of you guys have or know somebody who have been sick or survived or not survived. And these, this is all just something which is a preventable death we're trying to prevent. It's okay, time is gonna come, let it be, come at the one time is right, not because it's something we could have prevented. And that's what I'm here for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, you want to say something?
Thank you so much, Dr. Orfin. Do you have Dr. Hancock's?
Uh huh, Nicole Hancock, forty-two fifteen Brownstone Drive, by my Texas.
Do you want me to turn the timer on there, or just, she's speaking on item one as well?
Okay. I did prepare something, I'm sorry. Does anyone hear me? Okay. I'm gonna try to leave the mask on. So, good afternoon, and thanks, everyone, for having me in. I'm Dr. Nikki Hancock. I'm an internal medicine physician, and I practice with a diagnostic group. I've been in Beaumont for about three years now. As Dr. Orfin said, we are the only group at some hospitals that take coronavirus patients. Very few physicians in Beaumont actually agree to see coronavirus-positive patients. To dispel some rumors you may have heard, I don't make a dime more now than I did last year. Nobody that I know that's treating coronavirus patients is doing this for money, although this might be a good time for me to ask for a raise since Dr. Orfin is in the room. In fact, I have volunteered a significant amount of my time to the cause, going in and sacrificing time that I would have otherwise had with my family because I know that we can make this better, I know that patients can turn around, but we all have to show up. I have given my blood, sweat, and tears for the last five months to Beaumont, so they stay, so Beaumont stays healthy. Since the beginning of March, we've learned a lot about coronavirus, but we, we can't predict whom it will infect or how sick they might become, but we do know at-risk behaviors, and that includes large groups. So, what do coronavirus patients look like? They look like you and me, they look like my college-age nephew, they look like your grandmother. Our patients have ranged in age from the twenties to nineties. I've treated students, business owners, pastors, retirees, workers, pregnant women. Today, at Baptist Hospital, we currently have forty-three patients in the hospital actively fighting for their lives. My team has directly discharged more than two hundred patients safely to their homes with their families. Sadly, I have also discharged widows, women who fought for their lives when their husbands were also fighting just to learn that their husbands had passed away from the illness. Each one asked me, "Dr. Hancock, when is it safe to bury my husband?" How do you answer that? They couldn't visit their husband, when is it safe to bury them? They're in the hospital fighting for their lives, when is it safe to bury their husband? We have seen extremes in the last five months. In the beginning, we didn't know who was positive, the tests were not readily available by the time they came back, maybe not useful. I remember the day that Dr. Orfin is talking about, that we ran out of medications, we've run out of BiPAP machines, we all had to take a breath and wait to see if we had another ventilator that someone could manage to get. Even during that time, we learned a lot about treating this disease. Then came Memorial Day, graduations, reopening businesses, the Fourth of July, summer fun, giving way to coronavirus hotspots in nursing homes, prisons, chemical plants, small businesses, and now twenties and thirty-year-olds in our community. Entire families have been affected. A father in one hospital room, next door to a son, fighting for his life in the same hospital. I've had a grandmother next door to her grandson, both fighting for their lives. No visitors allowed, all alone. Fortunately, I've not had to treat children for this illness, even though they can carry coronavirus, we haven't seen them become very sick. But we don't know enough about this virus to know if later on they would become sicker just by harboring the virus. We don't know, it could plague them in the future, that's my worry, as a parent. The rapid influx of coronavirus patients has created concern for many medical professionals, professionals, even doctors that accept COVID patients. Saving lives of coronavirus patients requires an all-hands-on-deck approach. A lot of our nursing staff has become ill with coronavirus. We've lost five thousand seven hundred and sixty work hours due to infected staff. The sickness or loss of even one doctor, as you notice, very few treat this, could mean no capacity to treat more. Right now, there's not enough beds or equipment for an influx, a rapid influx of patients. We had to fight so hard to get medications like remdesivir. You may not have known this, but not a lot of hospitals were getting it. We got it. We fought, we got that medication. I do not have enough to sustain a huge influx. We've given that to seventy patients so far, and most are doing, doing well. We also have clinical trials on plasma, we're seeing good outcomes from that. Since the Fourth of July, we've had days where there were no BiPAPs available, like I said. We've had to divert patients away from the center. Patients have had to go to other states. We've had to rely on other states for nursing staff. Traveling nurses from other places, less hard-hit than we are, are coming here to see patients. And I will tell you, they're not gonna give the dedication that this nurses here are gonna give these patients because they are Beaumont nurses, and they're going to treat their patients as family. We've learned a lot, enough to know that this is the worst time to open up to big events. We currently have enough medications and experienced staff to handle the current patient load. We have protocols, we have systems. As a physician, I round with respiratory therapy, physical therapy, clinical pharmacy. We are all hands on deck, and we are getting patients better, two hundred at least going home to their families. But I cannot sustain a large influx. So, please help us, help Beaumont. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Hancock. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, is there any other citizen who wishes to speak on the consent agenda, one, four through ten, of the regular scheduled agenda? Okay, if there's no one, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to pull number one on the consent agenda. Counsel, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, with regard to the item that you're asking to be pulled, it's already posted as an agenda item. Can we discuss that? I'd like to discuss that separate from the rest of the consent agenda.
I'm pulling it, why would you want to discuss it? I put it on, and I can pull it.
And I have some questions about it.
Of me?
I have some questions about that item, yes.
Well, if I'm pulling it, if you want to talk about it during the consent agenda, you can, but I'm pulling the item.
Okay, so you don't want to, you won't allow us to consider that separate?
Well, there's no reason to consider it because I'm pulling it, but you're welcome to make.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion for approval, less the first item, and there's a second. Is there any discussion? This would be the time to discuss it if you would like to, but I'm pulling the item.
Okay. The item that you have pulled was to fill the unexpired term of Corey Crenshaw with Sandy Pate. And I have a concern about that because, under our charter, Sandy Pate is related to a sitting council member within the second degree of affinity, which is prohibited by the city charter. So, I'm glad that you're pulling it, and I appreciate that. But my question is, is it still your intention to fill the unexpired term of Corey Crenshaw with someone else that would be permissible under the city charter? that would be permissible under the city charter?
I'll have to make that decision, I'm pulling the item. The reason I'm pulling the item is because it was brought to my attention from your Facebook post that it was against city charter. I was not aware of that, it's never come up before, she has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission before, and it was never, it was never brought up then, so I had no reason to think that it would be in violation of the city charter. When our city attorney informed me that that was correct, that it was, after he looked it up, I said, "I'm going to pull that item."
Okay.
And that's what I'm doing, so.
Well, thank you for that.
Typically, we would not discuss an item that's pulled, but if you're intent on doing that to make an issue of something that I possibly did wrong, then you can go ahead and do that. But it wasn't intentional, and immediately when I heard that it was the case, city attorney, did I not say I'm going to pull the item? Immediately when I found out, I had no way to know that that was against the city charter, I don't know every single verse in the city charter, and apparently none of, none of you do either, because this was not brought up when she served on that commission before.
No, I would rely on the city attorney to do, to take that, but that apparently wasn't brought up before.
Well, for some reason, it was brought up by you, so I would rely on you in the future then to do it for anyone else because you didn't do it the last time she served.
I'll, I'll be glad to, Mayor. The only other question I have is, I want to verify something. You're quoted today by Kevin Steele as saying that the reason you're pulling this, or that you're wanting to replace Mr. Crenshaw from the City Planning and Zoning Commission is because he has publicly endorsed another man that has announced he's running for mayor. Is that a true statement?
I know of several council members that sit right up here right now that have replaced people because they publicly endorsed another candidate. And I'm not going to go into that because we're not, that's not in front of us, but I can name them and they know who they are.
Okay.
And, some of them are right here.
You're not going to deny that then, okay, thank you.
Well, why would I deny it? I'm not on trial here.
That's all I have.
Mayor, may I say something, please?
Certainly.
Would it be possible, since we're social distancing, to take the mask off so people know who's talking? I'm not a ventriloquist and I can't do Taylor, but still, just so you know who's up here doing it as opposed to people looking at each other.
It's your right to do whatever you want, I'm keeping my mask on.
Well, I think the rules say social distancing.
Yeah, and you're welcome to do that.
Okay. There's people that brought up the fact that she is my sister-in-law, she's married to my brother, as the mayor knows, I had absolutely nothing to do with this at all, and had we voted on it, I would have recused myself for that obvious reason.
However, we did vote on it once before, and I think it was unanimous, because we've never turned anyone down.
No, I'm, I am saying, based on the circumstances that we've since found out, because at the time, nobody brought it to anybody's attention.
So, basically, what you're saying, when you voted for her to be on there before, you didn't know either that it was against the charter?
Well, no, not at.
Okay, just, just ask.
And I'm just trying to clarify so everybody understands what I'm saying. It wasn't me, Sandy's married to my brother, I love him, they're great, but I would have recused myself had we voted today. That's important for you to know. And when it came up before, before we had any questions about it, we all did vote unanimously, because it didn't appear that there was, at the time, an issue.
Well, there wasn't then, it's, there's an issue now because it's political.
Well, that's a strange politics, it's strange bedfellows, as we all know. But anyway, that's the only point I wanted to make, because I didn't want anybody to think that I had anything, I called the mayor and said, "Hey, put my sister-in-law up here." They've been friends for a long, long time, and she had served before.
And she did a really good job reporting to our staff.
That's right, I don't think anybody complained about it, but just for the record, I wanted to make that point, so that's all.
Mayor, one further thing. You just made the statement that it wasn't an issue then, but it is an issue now because it is political. No, it's an issue if it violates the city charter. It wasn't called to our attention then, it should have been, but it wasn't. When you know better, you need to do better. So, if I've called it to your attention.
Who called it to your attention?
If I've called it to your attention, now you know better, so we can all expect to do better.
Well, I pulled the item.
Okay.
We should not even be discussing it.
Then let's move on.
I pulled it.
Call for the vote.
But you wanted to discuss it, excuse me, you wanted to discuss it as while we're discussing it. I pulled the item. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, first item, please.
Mayor and council, item one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Beaumont, amending ordinance twenty dash oh-two-zero, to amend the public health emergency disaster orders for the City of Beaumont, continuing the closure of certain city facilities, providing for separability, providing for a penalty, and providing for repeal. On June the twenty-third, the city council amended the emergency disaster orders for the City of Beaumont to allow for the opening of all previously closed city facilities on or before July the thirty-first, with the exception of the Lakeside Center. Mayor Ames and Mayor Protem Felshaw have requested that this item be placed on the agenda to reconsider the opening of certain facilities.
Hey, council, you have heard the reading of item number one, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to affirm the ordinance that was passed on June the twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
A second.
Okay, so you're making a motion that we keep the facilities open as we discussed on August first, for August first, is that correct?
May, may I offer an amendment?
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, is there an amendment?
I would like for us to consider, separate the Event Center from the Julie, the Jefferson, and the Civic Center, exclude those.
What do you, when you say exclude, you mean, keep them closed?
Well, there's not really a lot going on.
It doesn't matter, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to.
I know, I'll clarify, I'm happy to do it. The only thing that I knew that was scheduled for the Julie Rogers was the Symphony, which can be postponed and moved later. I don't know that there's any big events that haven't been canceled in August or scheduled for the Jefferson Theater or the Julie Theater. The Event Center, however, has weddings, wedding venues have been open for a long time. And when you look at the wedding venue protocol, it's less strict than what we have at the Event Center, which would require our friends, and we talked last week, there's several companies that do screening, which is what the governors ask for us to do, if we open up those city, those community centers. We also need to know that there's other cities out there like Garland, Fort Worth, Rolette, a whole lot of cities in the state of Texas that have opened up their centers. And so, what I want us to do is base this on what the facts are and the reality. If you can go get a venue for a wedding, which you can, and follow the social distancing, it's less strenuous than having a wedding at the Event Center. So, two things, number one, we got people that planned weddings probably two years ago, that were going to come up, say, "Too bad, do something." Well, that's unfair, in my opinion, but when you realize that if they could find another place, they would be not following as strenuous a protocol as we have in ours. We're making it safer for them to have their event where it's scheduled in the Event Center, and there's a couple of companies, I asked last week, I said, "I know how capitalism works, and if there's some body that can offer a service that can be paid for, there has got to be people that do screening." Well, that day, I walked into our executive session, I told city council, Foster Enterprises and Triangle Recovery both do it and have been doing it. So, if we did this, it'd be, simply be a matter of telling those people, "We have to do this for you to keep you safer and follow the guidelines that we have." And, if, if, if we're looking at this from the factual standpoint, then we have to look at it, if we turn those folks out and they went to a venue that's a wedding venue, they'd be less safe there than they would at the Event Center. Now, that, quite honestly, doesn't make any sense at all to me, or I think anybody else with an IQ over about four. If you're going to be safer in the Event Center than you would be at a wedding venue, then it would make perfect sense that we want to try to help as many people as we could. So, my amendment was that we allow the events that we've scheduled, many of which are weddings, in the Event Center to go on, that we eliminate Jefferson, Julie, and the Civic Center until such time that we think it's appropriate.
So, would you state that in the form of a motion, please?
I amended his motion, if he'll accept the amendment.
Can I ask a question first?
Certainly.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Arfin?
Dr. Arfin, my question is, and to reiterate what Councilman Pate said, is closing all the facilities down with the exception of the Event Center, with the understanding that we're monitoring the place closely, we're going to practice social distancing, we're regulating the number of people that are allowed in the facility, temp checks and whatever extra mile we can go to, to make sure the safe, the place is as safe as possible. I can't speak for the rest of council, one of the concerns that I have is that I think at times, we send the message that, you know, it's safe to go to this place, but you can't go to this place, it's safe to go to Home Depot, but you can't go to the Event Center, it's safe to go to, that's a concern that some of us up, up here have. And by closing all those facilities down with the exception of the Event Center, do you think that that is something that is agreeable?
You know, my response, I'll give you two responses, those are the same question.
And I hate to put you on the spot.
Dr. Arfin, since we're on television, you need to speak into the microphone because the people that are listening might not be able to hear you.
Yeah, you know, these technicalities, I mean, to open and not to open, which many of you all decide to. My point over here is that we, as every, you know, me, myself, everybody in this room, everybody in this town, we all have to take that conscious effort. I do not believe you can monitor anybody. I do not believe most of the people we see, they don't even know where they got it. I had a lady who died, okay? She said the only time she left was when to HEB to do groceries, before, because I've talked to most of the people before they got real sick and died. So, we just have to be, you, I do not know how you control this stuff, I had a ER doctor last, two nights ago, told me that this, this gentleman came in, tested positive for COVID and was not sick, that he needed to be admitted, and then, you know, he gave him all this, what he's supposed to do, quarantine and this, and be, make sure the family is tested. And next thing the doctor tells me, he goes to a Mexican restaurant, he's sitting with the family, having dinner. And I do not know what, what can we do, you know, I do not know if we close the, all the venues will change anything, you know? At least we can try, at least we can try to give a strong message, and this is what I was here for, that we, in this town, have no idea what's about to happen. If we, this is a crisis, this is a very critical time, you know, when we are losing a, one, a life which could have been prevented on daily basis. We, as, you know, as it was an internal joke, I'll call Dr. Hancock a widow maker, because a lot of the husbands died, you know? They, they would have been okay if it was not because of this virus. So, I do not know the answer, I do not believe anybody in this world has the answer, we all are trying and scrambling, and my conversation with you gentlemen were that, until that time happens, we got to find a new normal. And this is what I'm, I'm thank you for asking me to come here, we got to find a new normal, and we got to live with it for a little, for, for a while, till we have a, till we have some treatment, cure, vaccine, whatever we expecting to come around the corner. But one thing which I'll, the, the other thing which I want to say, you know, we can fight this virus, if we don't have too many people get sick, getting sick at the same time. People who have got, who's, who are getting better now, truly not being arrogant, I tell them, you know, "I'm glad you got the virus on the fifth month, not the first month." We have twice more cases right now, that the amount of patients sick, we are at the peak, we have, we have twice more patients than before the first lock, lockdown happened. Twice more people, twice more people are dying than the first surge we had. And if it gets any worse, I do not know what we will do. You know, we, literally, you know, a lot of us are going home to just eat and sleep. I haven't taken a day off in past five months, you'll see me every day in the hospital. So, whatever we do, I do not know the answer, nobody does, you know, wish, you know, people, everybody's trying, you know, our government is trying, they say, "Let's, business got to open," those people are suffering, and I'm conscious about everybody, and now here we're talking about people's life, okay? So, we can, now, of course, in a, we are blessed to be in a small town, you know, so a lot of things are working in our favor, and we got to use, utilize those things by save our family member from dying from this preventable, I'll call it a preventable disease. People come in, we have the resources, we can give them medicine, we can give them plasma, whatever we have, we have nurses, staff to take care of them. If you give me, and same thing which I say, if I've got five more patients coming on daily basis than what we are currently, and for five more days, those people could not be attended, we won't have enough doctors, nurses, medicine, we'll, we have such a small reserve, let me put it this way, we have no reserve. So, whatever we do, you know, I cannot, you know, I'm not an expert, I do not know, I'm being ready, you know, I know, I want people to get married, you know, so, don't take me wrong, but, but, but over here, we, we got to have a, it's not a, does not have to be a political fight in this room. We have to make a conscious decision, was good for our friends and family, and that's we treat, and so we, we got to do something, find a new normal, and I, in my opinion, I don't believe we have to go back and forth, we have to stick to one normal for our town, and that's what you all, you know, you know, you all represent, so we got to, we got to find a new normal and live with it and live with it comfortably, like we'll have, virus is not going nowhere, we'll have sick people coming every day, we'll be sick people going to ICU every day, some unfortunate one may not make it, this is the, this is what we live, what we live in, but we do not want to have patients waiting an hour in the ambulance, okay? This is the how words have gotten. Not this weekend, but the weekend prior to that, the ER, the freestanding emergency room, a patient needs admission, they cannot find a hospital bed. The doctor over there at Beaumont ER tells me he have called fifteen hospitals in hundred-mile radius, after calling fifteen hospitals, he got patient accepted in Lafayette. Okay, that brings to another issue, we got a, you know, we got a prison system over here, they are occupying our bed, okay? That brings us to a third, the most important issue, which is, I'm totally against, that, you know, you know, we all deal with number, how many ICU beds you got? Hey, you got two more beds, okay? Fine. We have to have our hospital, a portion of the hospital available to take care of people who don't have COVID. We cannot take that away from people who are having heart attack, stroke, bleeding, surgeries, elective surgery, which I believe is important, you don't want to wait till it's your, your gallbladder ruptures and become a life and death situation and getting operated on, and I believe that would be wrong. So, I'm totally against, you know, we, we're going to stop elective surgery, we can't do that, we got people who will, who don't have COVID have a need for the hospital, right now, one-third or more of the hospital is consumed by the COVID patient. Luckily, we're in summertime when hospitals are not that busy. When the fall comes, when we start seeing flu again, and we start seeing all this stuff again, I do not know what will happen. So, this is something crisis we have, I hope I answered your question, so.
May I ask a question, please? While he's still up.
Go ahead.
Dr. Arfin, everybody knows what a great doctor you are.
Well, thank you.
And we appreciate it, and we know that our friends in the hospital have shut down some beds because it's my, if the information I have, it's taken you one-point-seven-five nurses to tend to something that would routinely take one. So, it's almost taken two nurses to take care of the COVID patients as compared to what they would normally do if we just went in for an appendectomy. So, I know that y'all shut down beds in order to take those resources and focus on the COVID. And one of the things, and I think this was, I don't want to put words in Taylor's mouth, but as a physician, you always try to make a decision based on what's the best option available, every single time. I mean, I know you, because I know you think like that, and that was one of the things that I, the point I was making. And that was one of the things that I, the point I was making is for somebody who's going to get married, they could literally go down there and book someplace for a wedding and just show up with this and social distancing. If we have it at the event center, we're actually going to do more screening, just like you go into the hospital, you know? If I walk into St. Elizabeth or Baptist or the outpatient pavilion, somebody's going to say, we're taking your temperature, you're 97.3. And then you can proceed, social distancing. And that's basically the kind of procedure that the governors outline for venues that we have, which would really make it safer for the people going to the civic, at the event center than it would go into the elegante if they were going, if they went over there. And that's, that's the question that I have for you. Wouldn't it seem reasonable that if we go another step towards safety? We can't. You can't monitor everybody all the time. You know that. I know you, there are patients that come in and say, how long you been sick? Well, I've had fever for 13 days. And you go, why didn't you come in? Well, sometimes people just don't make the best decisions for themselves because they think they'll get over it. We know how serious this is. I know you know how serious it is. And that's why I'm saying, with the protocols that we would have to follow, the screening protocols, it would actually be safer for somebody to have a wedding at the event center than any other place that are having weddings right now. And that's the thing. If that wasn't the case, then we'd have to maybe take a look at it. But that's the situation that we're in, and that would be the question. If, if we're going one more step towards safety, wouldn't that seem to be a reasonable approach compared to no safety other than this and social distancing, which those people are not going to be as conscientious, I think, as our people are, because they're in the business of putting on weddings?
Yeah, Mr. Page, I'll answer your question. I believe you, you know, the, having gatherings, you know, minus the social distancing, you know, it's, it's my opinion. I have a family of eight who went on a vacation. Seven of them ended up in the ICU. One of them did not survive. So, and that's just a family vacationing together, went out of state. I just could not agree, you know, with due respect, that we have this big gathering, and I cannot see how it can be monitored. I know you can check the temperature, when hospitals are not allowing visitors these days, when big sports events are being canceled, you know? I just, that's the point. That's why we are here to present to you that this is a critical matter. We, whatever decision we make tonight may save people, and some people may see a overwhelmed healthcare system, may not be able to access healthcare. That's what I'm here for. So, I do not know if that really, if we have all those 100 people are so conscious, you know, they took a bath with Hibichline and, you know, had that mouthwash and whatever they did, and taking Plaquenil for prophylaxis, or took plasma for prozac. I do not know the answer. But the thing which I'm here, if we have big gatherings and, you know, and, and just only like, over here, we have to meet, we have to keep a distance. So, if we restrict to things which are just necessary, if we can avoid, you know? And we are seeing all these hotspots. People in clusters are getting, you know? I don't want to share stories after a story, but I would, Mr. Page, I would strongly urge you to think about, you know? It's not, it's about people getting together. You can monitor them at the door. You cannot monitor them, monitor them past the door. You cannot wash them in the bathrooms, you know? So, there are many different things.
But my question to you, would you rather have it where we are monitoring, or just them just having it someplace else? One has to be better than the other.
I, I would not, I would basically go on the record and tell people, it's not a good idea to have a gathering. That's what I would do.
But before we go any further on that, I want to clarify. The governor's order, and we, and we did talk about this, the governor's order does not say that we monitor the guests. It says we have to monitor the vendors, like the band, and the caterers. We have to take their temperature. The governor's order does not say the guests. And you did make that statement. But if you're suggesting that we hire someone to do that, I think before, if, if Councilman Neal does accept your amendment, then we need to say, if you're suggesting that we hire someone to do that, who pays for that? The city, or the people that booked the wedding? And if it's the people that booked the wedding, that's not in their contract. The governor's order does not say guests.
Well...
But I'll, I know that Councilmember Getz had something, if you were through.
Right.
I think you had something for Dr. Orfey.
I do.
My, my...
Go ahead, and then I'll ask my question.
It would be that we screen everybody that walks in. I know what it said. It said, the vendors and those folks.
That's not what you said, though, sir.
I'm correcting. Watch my lips. I'm correcting myself.
Okay.
I said, the governor's orders allow wedding venues with no monitoring. We can schedule and screen everybody that walks in. That's our prerogative, okay? We're already monitoring the vendors. So, if we're screening everybody that walks in, just like they do in the hospital for any of the outpatient or whatever elective surgery, and plus, I know there's a lot more people going into the hospital because we didn't have elective surgery for a while, because nobody went in. So, now when they could, everybody's trying to get in as appreciated as fast as they can. And that would naturally cause a rush for rooms that weren't even used last month because nobody was there. But to clarify that, if I misspoke, was that we would want to screen everybody. And I think in this particular case, we have a contract. We didn't know what the governor was going to say. But for the safety of our citizens, if it cost us a couple hundred dollars, that's something that the city ought to take in, because we've got that event center sitting out there. And we don't want them to go somewhere else that's less safe. That's my whole approach.
Councilmember Neal, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm going to make, that's not a joke or humor, you know? We may be, what I've been trying to say, we may have to think about converting that into a hospital. You know, I'm, I'm, that's not, I'm not being funny.
Oh, I know you're not.
But that's where we are sitting. That's what I've been trying to say for past hour.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
First, I think that's a very extremely reasonable compromise, but I have a question, a couple of questions for you, Dr. Orfey. I hear the weariness in your voice. I hear the sadness in your voice because of the situation that exists. Through no fault of anybody's. It's just something that has happened, and it's all over the world. I recognize how serious this is. I hope everybody recognizes how serious this is. But having said that, life has to go on. And to me, and I'm going to ask you if you agree or not in a minute here.
Sure.
But if you're going to have people congregate in large numbers at a grocery store, or a hardware store, or a church, these are all very much like at a venue where you have a lot of people in close proximity together. Would you agree?
Which part?
Well, any of that. You're going to have people in close proximity to one another, certainly in a church. You know, and I've been to grocery stores, and there's been a lot of people in close proximity. You're right there in front of the checker, and, you know, the bagger and people in line. My point is that it is inconsistent to pick winners and losers and say, we're going to shut this down, but we're not going to shut this down. We're going to do this here, but we're not going to do this there. To what Councilmember Page is saying, to me, sounds like a reasonable compromise because, yeah, we don't have to have a symphony, or a magic show, or a circus, or any of that where you're just having people come in and gather to be entertained, okay? And that's, that's a distinction in my mind. You're there just to be entertained. But if you're trying to gather for a major life cycle event, like a wedding, you know, to me, that's a difference. And the other part that makes it different to me is, you know, we made this decision to open these venues not last week, but on June the 23rd. And when we said on June the 23rd that we were going to open these venues effective August 1st, we didn't get this hue and cry. Now, I know that numbers have gone up since then, and, and we're focusing on that. But speaking to the suggestion and the proposed amendment, which I would be in favor of, do you, do you understand, or can you speak to the reasonableness of trying to continue to have these life cycle events under close scrutiny where you're monitoring temperature when people walk in? If you come into the, if you walk up to the event center, you've got 100-degree temperature, you don't get in. If you walk into the event center and you have your mask on, and then you take it off, like you and I have done here today, you're going to be asked to put it back on or leave. And if they don't, the police can be summoned. If you are acting crazy and you're doing foolish things at the event center, again, you'll be asked to cease or leave. So, these, these are the things that I'm trying to weigh in my mind as I balance the oath that I took to uphold the Constitution, which includes the First Amendment and the right of peace, peaceful assembly, because that is something guaranteed to us under the Constitution. But we also have the obligation to maintain the safety of the public. So, it's a balancing act. And we are up here, all of us, I'm sure, trying to do the best job we can on that balancing act to, to, to do that, to make sure people are safe, but that life can go on also. So, can you speak to that?
Yes, sir. I think I'll, I'll answer all of your questions. The, you know, I have respect for all religions. I don't discriminate based on their color, accent. One-third of outbreaks in the ICU, they all have, all the hotspots were churches. They were a group of people who prayed together, got sick together, you know? Of course, that's a decision for me not to make. I'm here at the end to give same care to everybody. In my book, I'm told some, every other day, this patient is a VIP, and my response is, every patient is a VIP. I took a hypocritical oath also, okay? And for me is that I usually have a, as Mr. Page said, I usually don't ask patients, option A or option B. I usually tell them, this is the best for you, if you were my brother or my father, you know? I've lost a father and a younger brother to medical illnesses. Have dealt with my kids in crisis, you know? You know, things which changed me in my life that made me more, you know? Maybe that's the reason I'm standing over here, not any other doctor in this town. So, my answer is that can we prevent this virus from spreading? And hell no. We can't do that. We do not know how to, we know how to spread. If you have a temperature as normal, it does not mean they don't have the virus. So, and I may call it a BS, screening you, when you don't even know, you know, that you're carrying the virus. 85% of people are silent carriers. They don't have the disease. You've got thousands of people. You have three times more people than reported right now.
Did you say 85% were silent carriers?
Are, will be, will be, will be silent carrier. Will have little or no symptom. You know, we have doctors who have tested, the antibody will come positive. They will not have, there's a lot unknown. As, when you have thousands of people who get infected, and a small portion of them get in the hospital, that's where we, I'm there. I'm just talking about not, I'm not talking about the, all those 85% of people. I'm talking about that 5% out of the thousand people who got infected. And there's 50 people who may end up in the hospital in a week. We don't have capacity to take care of those 50 patients. That's what I'm trying to talk about. So, in, in the whole nutshell, answering both your gentlemen's question, I believe that if we, same thing, if we, hopefully, I'm making sense. If you find a new normal, these are things we do need. I'm not saying shut down the event center or open the event center. I want just, I wanted you guys to decide that, you know, what's the best, the oath which you have taken and the responsibility you have, that this is how we're going to live our life. Life will go on, okay? But just like with any deadly virus pandemic we've dealt with, they all are short-lived. We have seen the AIDS decade, when AIDS were killing people. I went through residency when every third patient had AIDS. Now, we rarely see AIDS patient in the hospital. We, I was, when I was going through my residency in Michigan, every third patient had AIDS. We'll get a needle stick, and we'll getting, we taking Xyderbulin ourselves, you know? Trying to save our life, hopefully, we don't catch it, you know? So, nowadays, the same thing. We got, we have all these PPEs and everything, and all day long, I'm with COVID patient. You know, this may surprise you. A lot of healthcare worker, like in our hospital over there, a lot of nurses test positive. Not a single nurse have tested positive who's taking care of COVID patient. Okay? So, these are, that's why I'm here, to share with you things which you guys may not know, you know? We talk about bringing nurses from outside. Dr. Hancock said, they're, they're not even half as good, the nurses who are over here, okay? Of course, it takes, it's a lot of work to take care of a COVID patient. We have one-to-one nurses if a patient is critical in the ICU. These nurses, and this is something which is a separate issue, which of course, you know, I hope media puts it on the newspaper tomorrow. We have our nurses who are really literally working day and night, risking their life. They are paid half what we are paying nurses we bring from outside, okay? So, we have, if we start losing our nurses, who'll go for that $5,000 a week pay somewhere, when they don't even make half of it over here, when they're twice as good, there's a disbalance over there. I'm not getting off the subject. But the, the healthcare crisis we have in this town, I'm missing a general who's running this town in terms of healthcare crisis. We don't have a general right now. And that's what, that's the one reason I'm here. Opening the venue or not, I will be, I would say, whatever you guys decide. And I'll come back again, and I'll bring a list, just like Dr. Hancock, you know? How many we were seeing, and how many are surviving, and how many are not surviving, and how many did not get one care, ordinary care? And how many people died because we didn't have the ventilator? We didn't have the manpower. There are doctors in this town refusing to see patients who have COVID. I understand, life will go on, you know? But I just, I'm just here to, you know, wake people up that we have a crisis in our hand.
Thank you, Dr. Orfey. You have something else?
Yes, please.
Because I'm going to let him sit down in just a minute. I feel like we're...
It looks like I'm about to faint over.
No.
No, he's used to stand up all day long. I know. I've watched this guy really closely. As we know, every year, we have season, we have the flu season. And right now in Texas, we're looking at about 5,000 people, all of whom are special to somebody. I mean, if somebody that's a Christian, you believe every, every single person is special. God made them. There's a reason they were there. And right now, we're looking at about 5,000 people that have passed away. And as I understand it, that between 2018 and 2019, the flu season, Texas, which has lost about 5,000 people of COVID, lost 10,020 people to the flu and pneumonia. A lot of people don't realize we lose that many people to the flu and pneumonia. I mean, I know you do, but the average person doesn't have anything from which to compare. If, if we had 25,000 people die of COVID, and 10,000 that died of the flu, you could say, okay, well, now you can put it in perspective. And, and they're not the same, but this is routine in Texas. The year before, I think it was 9,500 that died of pneumonia or the flu. They're not the same, but when you look at people that are dying of issues, pretty much the same ones, because if you got COVID, it's a good chance you're going to get pneumonia and blood clots and a whole lot of other issues. But just to give people a perspective of the kind of numbers that we're looking at, Harris County's got 4 million people. They had 615 deaths out of 4 million. And they're... And they're leading the state. We've got 55 in the Jefferson County. But the main thing we want to do, all of us up here feel the same way, we want to keep them as safe as we can. And that was why, that I threw that out.
Mr. Page, you know, I mean, sometime, if I'm talking to an attorney, I won't talk to him in legal language because I won't know what the hell I'm talking about. We're both friends, so I don't take this as an offense, but the, and I'll give you a simple. True, people will die, okay? People will not, won't be able to fight a life-threatening illness. But the point which I'm trying to make, and I just want to say it in a different way, with flu, expected to have X number of patients with flu this year, we are built to take care of them. We have medicine, hospital beds, nursing staff, okay? We are prepared to take care of this number of patients every year. This is what is expected. We're not prepared to take X number of these patients, okay? So, the first thing we can do is do something which could be preventable. So, we're not prepared. You gave me, we have got how many, 86, 90 ICU beds right now, you know? Last night, not going to, at 6:00 in the evening, I am trying to get people out so I have room for patients who are waiting in the emergency room. Today, I extubated two people who are, came off the ventilator because of COVID, who survived, okay? In my normal days, the normal practice is, we keep them in ICU one night to watch them. Now, I'm keeping them in ICU for four hours to make a room for the next one. This is where we are, okay? If it gets any worse, I don't know what I'll do. I'll probably, you know, my, my hospital case, director will call me, we need to make some room. I say, look, arrange some home ventilators, I'll send them home. I don't know where to send them. So, this is what I'm saying. The answer to your question is, of course, the influence, the effect, we got, I got right now, two people with flu sitting in the hospital. It's not a flu season yet, but we are prepared for those. For this COVID, the surge, the number of, if we have five more admissions daily, we're not prepared for this. We already have exhausted our healthcare system, and our staff is tired, you know? It's a major issue, and I do not believe, you know, that nobody in this, I don't, nobody in this town, you know, have come up, because nobody feels it's their problem. Everybody thinks it's this person's problem or their problem. It's not my problem, you know? We feel like on Friday evening, when we're working weekend, we are thrown out in the war zone, you know? Live or die, you know? We survive the weekend, and then we are ready Monday when everybody comes in with their suit and tie, you know? So, this is the dilemma which I'm saying. If this thing, if the way it is slowly creeping on us, if it continues, if we don't do anything now, and that's the whole reason. And I'm sorry, I don't keep, you know, I don't read newspaper every day, but this one, the day when I found out that this is about to happen, it alarmed me that I gotta do something, do my, you know, the oath which I took that I cannot, we cannot handle. If I have flu, every family doctor can take care of that patient. When I have more than half of the town, doctors in this town do not want to take. If I put a gun to their head, they will, but nobody is. You know, we have cardiologists who will refuse to come see the patient. They want to do the tele-visit, you know? They are allowed to do tele-visit, okay? So, they're not coming to the hospital. I'm the cardiologist. You're looking at me, I'm a pulmonary critical care guy. But this is, this is reality, not, you know, I'll do the best I can. I know, you know, one thing which I know, I don't know a lot of things, but one thing which I know, when a person is sick, I know what to do. That's what I know, and I'm very confident, you know, telling you. If somebody can save you, I can. I know everything humanly possible I can do. But you know, God gave me strength, I think it's a privilege for me to be, privileged for me to be here, be in Beaumont, be able to take care of people, and we'll continue to do so. But we, as a city official, we've got to make, we got to, politics aside, we got to make the right decision. And I believe it is a 12-month, okay? So, 12 is a max. Within a year or so, we'll be better prepared. Hopefully, we'll have medicine in our hand, vaccine in our hand. Lot of things will change, and our understanding in six months has tremendously changed. People who were dying in month one are going home these days. Because we have better understanding, that's how we, that's how we defeated AIDS, you know? That's how we defeated every endemic pandemic we have come across. So, this is important for us. I just hate to, you know, it ruins the day. Yesterday, somebody who did not survive because, you know, it just makes us sad, you know? Our nurses cried, really.
Oh, no.
They'll cry, they go home crying. So, anyway, so, any more questions?
We appreciate you very much. Thank you so much, Dr. Orfe. Okay, Councilman Neeld, are you gonna accept the amendment as made by Councilman Getz?
I would like to hear if there's any other comments from the rest of the county first.
You know where I stand, I'm not gonna vote for it.
But we are voting on this motion.
We have to vote on this motion.
And then we, if it doesn't pass, we go back to the original motion.
Or there wasn't an original. Yes, the original motion, and then if that one doesn't pass, another motion will need to be made. Like to keep them closed.
Mayor, can I get a clarification on the amendment?
Certainly. I think that would be great. Would you do that, please?
Sure. I want to amend the motion, the motion by Councilmember Neeld to eliminate, delete Jefferson Theater, the Julie Rogers, and the Civic Center, and allow the events that are planned in the event center to open up with the guidelines that are outlined by the governor, in addition that we screen everybody that walks in, which is more than they would get doing anything else, anywhere. Because if something happens and they cancel, they're gonna go somewhere else, and they won't be as safe wherever that is.
So, that's the amendment?
Yeah.
I would accept the motion.
Okay, the amendment. So, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second, as amended by Councilmember Page. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 The motion fails. Is there another motion?
Mayor, doesn't that take us, yes, I'll make a motion, that takes us back to the original.
Well, what we were proposing.
Yes. I'm, I so moved as, as read with the agenda item one.
So, that means to...
Point of order. We already have that motion on the floor.
Right, that's what I thought.
The motion on the...
Who made it?
Councilmember Neeld made the motion.
But it failed.
No.
No, my motion still has to be carried.
Okay, you mean when you, before the amendment, okay. So, you, that's still, okay, I got you. Sorry about that. So, the motion that was originally made, which is to leave everything open, is now on the floor. And there was a second by Councilmember Getz, and that was the same for the amendment, but now it's for everything not...
Original motion was to affirm the ordinance passed on June the 23rd.
Which is everything to be open, not excluding the event center, as Councilman Page said. Yep. Okay.
There's a second, now, now it's time for discussion on that motion, right?
If you want to discuss it anymore, sure. Who wants to discuss it?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
The city of Beaumont made a commitment weeks ago to open up the facilities beginning August 1st. To use the facilities, citizens would have to follow all CDC protocol, social protocols, including limiting attendance to 50% of the capacity of the building, wearing masks, social distancing, and having their temperature scanned before entry. This is consistent with Governor Abbott's executive order. I'm not really concerned that the Julie Rogers Theater, the Civic Center, or the Jefferson Theater will have any events, because no promoter is likely to book those venues with the kind of attendance restrictions that would be imposed. There's no way for them to make money at them. However, the event center is a different story. The city of Beaumont made a commitment weeks ago to open that facility up August 1st. And local couples have the event center booked every weekend in August for wedding receptions or weddings. Is it fair to pull the rug out from under them with less than a week's notice? Does it open the city up for a breach of contract claim? Is it moral or just to say to people that you can't use this city facility that you helped pay for with your tax dollars, but it's okay for you to take your wedding reception or your wedding to the Holiday Inn or the Compro Center or any number of private facilities? Sorry for the short notice. Does it strike anyone, it's hypocritical to say it is okay to have stores open or churches open, but we're not going to allow people to have major lifecycle events in a city venue? Does COVID not exist at HEB or a church, but lurks behind every pillar and beam at the event center? I'm not gonna flip-flop on this issue. We need to be fair and consistent in how rules are applied. I understand that some in the medical community, like Dr. Orfe, are very concerned that resources are strained because of this virus and fear increased numbers will increase and will cause additional concerns. I share your concern, and if that happens, then we will have to adapt and possibly consider more draconian measures. However, for now, we are supposed to be operating under the direction of Governor Abbott, who has had access to the top medical personnel in the state in deciding how we should phase in the reopening of Texas facilities. His order directs that event venues can be safely opened when operating at 50% capacity and employing CDC safety protocols, such as wearing masks, having your temperature taken before entry, and observing social distancing. In today's Beaumont Enterprise editorial, I was called irresponsible for taking the position that city venues should be opened. I say you can't have it halfway. If we're considering keeping city venues closed because of fear of increased infection despite following CDC protocols, then why would that same rationale not apply to other private event facilities, stores, and churches? It is the height of inconsistency and hypocrisy to say that it is okay for private event facilities, stores, and churches to be open, but not city venues. After all, you can pick up your groceries curbside, and you can attend church services via the internet. It might make you feel like you're helping to curb the spread by keeping these city venues closed, but in reality, you're diluting yourself. For me, the bottom line is the city made a commitment on June 23rd to open these venues up on August the 1st, and people have made their plans accordingly. They are counting on us keeping our word. In opening some of these venues, we are doing so in full compliance with the directives being provided to us by Governor Abbott. I refuse to live in fear. However, I will seek to make wise choices. We can debate all day long as to whether it is a wise choice to open these venues, but there are a couple of things that are not open for debate. One, keeping these venues closed while allowing similarly situated venues in the private sector is hypocritical and inconsistent. And two, we as a city council are breaking the promise and commitment we made to many citizens to open these facilities back up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. For the past several months, the city of Beaumont has been operating under the governor's orders, and I believe he has done a reasonably good job during these difficult times. With that being said, we have allowed most of our businesses to operate with certain restrictions in place, generally following these reasonable regulations. In mid-June, this council voted to allow the remaining city facilities to open, with the exception of the Best Year Center on August 1st. Last week, we voted again and moved forward with these reasonable directives. It is a matter of public record, we agreed to open parts of our city. And people took us at our word and made plans, in particular renting event facilities for weddings, business meetings, and family gatherings. Of course, we expect them to adhere to the guidelines. But this is what we passed, and the people made plans because they took us at our word. I have to admit, I was a bit surprised when I was contacted by the Beaumont Enterprise Friday afternoon, asking for comments on this matter being placed back on the agenda for the third time. If one can explain to me why you can go to places like Compro Center, Ford Park, church facilities, Lowe's, HEB, restaurants, and many other gathering places, both government-owned and privately-owned, but not City of Beaumont facilities, then I think we can have an honest discussion. How can COVID be here but not there? I've spoken with many of the same doctors you have, and the truth of the matter is, no one really knows. But we do have guidelines. We are being inconsistent in what can open and what should be closed. And freedom consists of making choices. I, for one, will stand by my vote, but appreciate that this is a judgment call in very difficult waters.
Thank you. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Are there any other comments? Okay, if there's none, there's a motion and a second to open the venues up on or before July 31st, as was voted on last week. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The motion fails. Okay, now I'll ask for another motion as the item reads to close the venues.
So moved.
Till when? Till when? We need to look these people in the eye and say, we don't tell you when we're gonna open.
Excuse me, he has a motion on the floor? I haven't called for a discussion yet.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Now, is there any discussion? And the motion can have an ending date, or it can stay undetermined because we don't know? Go ahead.
So, we're gonna ignore the governor's orders that he laid out that every other, that other cities are following. As I mentioned to you, Fort Worth, Garland, and there's a bunch of other cities that have done exactly what we're trying to do. And I think it's grossly unfair to tell these people at the last minute, we're gonna let you go somewhere else that's not as safe as the event center, if you can find it. Now, I would hate to think that there's some guy coming off active duty that plans on getting married, and I don't know that that's the case, and you gotta tell him, too bad, you can't get married now. You're just gonna have to get a pass some other time. The, we're talking about looking, and there's, none of them are here. So, we're not, we don't have to look them straight in the eye and go, too bad for you. People that are susceptible, anybody that's over 65, should do exactly what they know they should do. Avoid crowds. But we can't hold everybody's hand, because there are always gonna be people that are gonna ignore it. We'll be out here today, there'll be somebody driving, riding a motorcycle with no helmet. Now, I think it's kind of bizarre that we give people tickets for not wearing a seatbelt, but a guy driving 75 miles an hour on a motorcycle with no helmet, they just wave at him. Now, but that's his choice. What we're telling them is that we're smarter than you. You're not gonna make the right choices, because you just aren't as smart as we are. Well, I know there's a lot of people smarter than me. And if the governor and the health professionals that he has says this is reasonable, and we've adapted the other things, how do we tell people that, yes, you can go into a restaurant that has a bar and sit at the bar and eat lunch, but you can't go to a wedding reception for your family? Now, to me, it's highly hypocritical, and it's grossly unfair to these people. The people that are passing away, and I will remind you that the first fatality was a friend of mine for 50 years here in Beaumont, Randy Flat Town. It's personal to me. But he had a number of underlying health problems. But we're asking people to act responsibly. I can't tell a guy to get off the motorcycle, wear a helmet. That's his right to do that. You won't see me on a motorcycle, but that's my choice. If you want to ride one, hooray for you. But we expect people to be safe. We expect people to be reasonable in the decisions that they make. But for us to tell people at the last minute that what we told you we were gonna do, particularly on literally life-changing events, like a wedding, I think is just way over the top. That's it.
Question, Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Back to what Councilman Pate was saying, and I know we don't have to put a date on when we do open the facilities back up. Would you guys consider putting it back on the agenda in two weeks to discuss again?
Depends on the numbers.
That's what I'm saying. We'll look at the numbers in two weeks and see if we're trending up, trending down.
I think that we, that's what put us here right now, and what Councilman Pate's saying is that we made a promise to people, is what he's saying. I do remember that when we voted for it, that we said we would revisit it when we looked at the numbers. We've always said that from the very beginning.
And I'll find, clearing the schedule until a further date, but I'm saying I would like to bring it back up in a couple of weeks and reevaluate the numbers that we're looking at.
Your motion.
I have something.
Go ahead.
Do you mind if Councilman Phil shall answer first?
Go ahead.
Well, listening to both sides, I do understand that we are concerned about making promises that we can't keep. So, of course, there's a hesitation on the part of all of us to set a date on this thing, because we do not control the COVID-19. But isn't it correct that if any council member has a second, they can get any item on the agenda to discuss?
That is true.
So I'm not sure why you'd need my approval.
Under the council's rules, an item can't come back before the council unless somebody on the favorable side agrees with somebody else to bring it back.
Unless it's written into...
Unless it's part of the motion.
Fair enough. I understand now.
So is that a yes or a no?
My only concern, Councilman Neal, is that we've been here now from 1:30, it's 3 o'clock. The amount of discussion that's been invested in this item, I'm not sure that two weeks... I'm not sure that two weeks is going to make an impact on that. I agree with you. In theory, I do agree with you that we need to, this is a very fluid situation, and I think as the numbers drop, then we have to adjust to it, whether they go up or go down. I think as a city, we have to adjust to the crisis that we're in right now. I'm just not sure that two weeks is sufficient.
I've got a question, if I may.
Councilmember Getz was next.
Well, following on this, we've already demonstrated to our citizens that they can't take us at our word. So I don't know why we'd put any date on anything, because it's meaningless. Our word doesn't mean anything anymore. You know, it's arbitrary. So what we're really saying is, we know better than you do, so we'll tell you when it's okay for you to come back into your city buildings. Just let it ride.
I have to make a comment based on that. I'm sorry, just one moment. The reason that we have, the rules that we have, is so a council member can bring something back. Councilman Getz, I can't say how many times you've brought items back or asked to bring items back after the council has already voted numerous times. So I don't think it's fair to say we're telling the citizens they can't take us at our word, because we had a council member that listened to physicians and changed his mind. I don't think that's fair to say that, because many times we have voted on items, and you have asked for them to be brought back. That's the whole reason why we put the rule in place, to either wait six months or have someone on the opposite side of the issue to bring it back with someone. That is why we put that in. Councilmember Pate, go ahead.
All right, I want somebody to tell me what number changed that changed the attitude of some of the people here. What was that number? So we can put that number and say, okay, if it gets to this number, that's acceptable, and we'd open it up.
What do you mean, some of the people here? Some of us voted the other way last week.
I know you did. So my question is, if we're gonna wait, what's the magic number of, because people, when you say something, we're gonna see what we can to, you know, get the curve to go down. What's the curve? What's the number? Is that just...
What the...
No one knows what the number is. No one knows what the curve is.
Nothing's changed since last week. There were no numbers that changed last week. We've got 5,000 people in Texas that died, and I just got through telling you that 10,000 people last year died in the flu season, that 98% of the people sitting here that weren't in healthcare didn't know. 10,000, twice as much. So what's the number that we're gonna look at that's okay? So that we can tell people, when it gets to this number, we have a solution for you. But none of the numbers changed from the 23rd to last week. None of the numbers just blew up.
The deaths did.
55, think about this, Mayor. You got 55 people in a county of nearly 300,000. Do you know how many people die of heart attacks in four months? Dr. Orfeen could probably tell us. It's a heck of a lot more than 55 people.
It's not the same to me. It might be different to you, I'm just saying it's not the same to me.
But here's the thing, you mentioned homicides, and you're...
Yes, I did.
But this isn't a homicide. This is a situation that's...
You're taking that out of context. The comment that I made is that if we had eight homicides in four days, people would be in uproar, and rightfully so.
You're absolutely right, but that's apples and zebras. It's not even apples and oranges.
I was just, I was not making a comparison that it was the same. I was saying of the reaction of people.
Both of those facts are correct, if it was eight homicides. But if I went in and told somebody, you know, we had eight people pass away last week of cardiovascular issues, they'd go, man, that's a shame.
Okay.
And that's exactly what we're talking about, right? This is a health issue. This isn't homicides.
Understand.
And we've gotta look at this objectively.
Councilman, we have a motion on the floor. I entertain the other motions. I'm gonna ask for a vote on this one.
No, Mayor.
There is a motion.
There's no time limit.
Mayor, I ask that we call for the motion.
There is no time limit, Mayor.
Y'all been talking for a long time about the same thing.
Is, there is, can you find something in the rules that says there are a time limit?
In our rules, it does say if someone says the same thing over and over and over again, that they can be cut off.
I'm not saying the same thing over and again. I'm asking a question, which I did not ask prior to right now. What's the number that we pick, that we see in the future, and we can tell these people, when we get to that number, everything's gonna be okay? The thing is, there isn't a number. We're voting on a motion here and not the facts. 55 people, and since we started counting, March the 12th, have passed away of COVID, and every single one of them are important. I will guarantee you, a whole lot more than 55 people have died of cardiovascular problems in those four months, since it's the major killer of everybody in the United States, pretty much. Nobody even knows. But we're voting to do something based on that number. And my question is, what's the number that we're gonna look for in the future, so we can say, when we hit, if it goes to 60, then we're good? We don't, we're making a decision with no vision. Just somewhere out in the future, we promise we'll tell you what you guys can do.
That is not the case, Councilmember. When the numbers flatten out, it's what all the experts say. And if Dr. Orfeen is telling me that he would like to answer that, I'm gonna let him, because I know that everyone is looking at things that spike. Some of the venues that opened in cities have closed back up because of spikes.
I'm aware of that.
And we've had spikes, without a doubt. You look at our charts, we've had spikes. Dr. Orfeen.
You know, that'll be easy answer. After the initial surge, we had 30 patients at any given time in the hospital. Then when the curve was almost flat, easy manageable, good resources. I would propose and suggest that if, for five days in a row, if we have total number of hospitalized patients with COVID, because of COVID, not accidental, with COVID, because of COVID disease, if both hospitals have average senses of 30 for five days, then we, I think we can be very liberal.
And that's both hospitals, right?
Both hospitals, both.
Then how many are in there now?
Almost 100.
Okay. So, at some point in time, now, it is fair to say, if you do more tests and you tell somebody they got COVID, they're coming to you. Isn't that fair?
No.
Well, I mean, it's fair they're gonna go to a doc.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of the people are very educated. They have COVID, they self-quarantine. And actually, I have the flip side, the other problem. People don't seek medical attention. They'll say, maybe my fever will go away after, will go away tomorrow. It's exactly opposite. People are not seeking medical attention, that's why we have fatalities. We talk about number 47. People are surviving and getting better, because we have not exhausted our healthcare system. We've never had 100 patients in two hospitals, okay? It's a crisis time. We throw flu, we throw heart attack, we throw everything. So what will happen? Lot of people will come with chest pain and heart attack. You know how many percent of people they die? Very few, okay? Most of the people go from the ER to the table, get a heart cat, walk home, okay? Those are people who has a potential of getting a heart cat within two hours and go home. They'll die because they were not able to get help, because the whole hospital was occupied by COVID patients.
Would it be unfair to ask you, if we could go to the governor and get additional help? Would that be something that you and your associate...
They've already got a strike team through the state.
With due respect, Mr. Pate, I'll say one thing, you know? The same question, who's the general over here? We got to see who's fighting the battle over here. Every battle is different, you know? If we are gonna follow the book, we have textbook of medicine. We don't open up the book, how we're gonna treat the patient. We have that knowledge, but we make the decision with a judgment call based on experience, and knowing what to do is best interest for the patient. So answering your question, which, all the question which you had, of course, you know, how many people died in flu last year? Less than we had COVID deaths this summer. But the thing is that putting all together combined, that's my point in saying, if we have so many people with sick, you have a hospital occupied by inmates with COVID, regular COVID patient, you have taken away the right for people, if, you know, God forbid, I have a heart attack. You know, I'm having internal pain, I need a heart cat, I can't go to the emergency room, because ER is not willing to accept a patient. They are on diversion. Imagine any one of you guys, you know, you're all in age, that something is about to go wrong. God forbid, it doesn't happen for another 50 years. But if it happens, and you're in an ambulance, and ambulance is told the ER is on diversion. What do we do? And I'm sorry, I'm not insensitive of people having their wedding menus and this stuff. I'm just want to point out the crisis which we have. And I truly believe, you know, that it's, in my heart, I know it's a short-term crisis. The reason why we are here, because we don't have, month one, we all were panicking, okay? We were, I used to have, you know, every first COVID patient I put on the respirator, I did not sleep that night. I was worried that I'll get it. All these horror stories of doctors dying because of COVID. Lot of people who have died, who I personally know, who are doctors, have died. So this is where, you know, whatever you all know, you all have made commitments to people, and I respect that. Answer to that question, I believe that if we have a daily census of 30 COVID patients for five days in a row, both hospitals combined, make it 35, you know? That would be the right time, they say, we are good, we can be more relaxed. And I just said, you know, I don't want to keep repeating, that we will have COVID, we'll be living with it, just like we live with flu. But we want to have X number of people getting sick in this X number of time. We got to have...
Would it be fair to ask the two CEOs of Christus and Baptist to visit with us and have them, they know what their hospitals can do. I mean, I know how hard you're working, but...
I don't, I won't interrupt, but I'm, both are my friends. You know, they'll be asking me what to do.
Well...
Well, and we got a letter from them recently, the council did, from both of them, all three of them, actually.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, they both will be asking me what to do, because I'm telling you, Mr. Pate, we are in crisis, you know? I'm here to help the hospital. I'm not asking Paul Trevino or David Palmer to tell me what to do. I have to guide them, because they are not doctors, I am. They'll provide me all the tools, and which they have. They have provided me with all the tools, you know? Our congressmen have not done nothing for us, which I'm sad about, you know, which I'm just really frustrated about, to be very honest, that we are need for the following thing. I've never been asked, you know, anything I can do. I'm the frontliner out there, okay? I have seen more COVID patients than everybody else combined in this time, in these five months. So you can have any CEO, but they have been great, they have provided with all the tools possible, their influence, I mean, you know, long list. But I cannot say that, you know, they have looked the other way. They have opened up, they are paying nurses more, they're giving them hazard pay, and whatever they can come up with, you know, there are people buying them lunches, you know? And to the nurses to keep their spirit up and all this, it's a challenge. But truly, going back to the answer to that question, in my opinion, if we have an average census of 35 with both hospitals, then it's safe to say, then it's right, you know? If I have a second heart attack, I know the ER won't be on diversion. And this is all I'm talking, I can give you more...
So you got approximately 50 in each one?
Yeah.
Okay, so if drop to 35, you'd be banned with that?
That's right, combined.
Mayor, to answer Councilman Neal's question, I think that we all want to revisit this item. Once the numbers drop, that curve flattens out, and after we seek the advice of the medical personnel, I think we all agree that we should come back to this. So in answering your question publicly, will I commit to you to revisit this issue at the appropriate time? Yes. The only thing that I'm uncomfortable with is saying it's one week, two weeks, three weeks out, because I do not know what the COVID-19 numbers are going to do. I don't know what the medical personnel are going to advise us on, and I have no choice but to yield to the professionals and to listen to them. So to make a commitment, yes, at the appropriate time.
But why can't it be put on there for every two weeks? It doesn't mean that we're gonna pass it in two weeks, but just make it out there so that we can constantly be working on it. By not, by not accepting that, I can't ever bring it back up, per the rules of the meeting.
You can, with me, agree into it. The dissenting vote, or any other, anyone else on the other side, the dissenting side. That's why I answered your question publicly, to make a commitment to you, that the appropriate time, that I do believe that we should revisit this, because I know that everyone on this council is all concerned about the same thing, and that is the health and well-being of our citizens, and the reopening of our community as quickly as we can, in a safe and responsible manner.
I have one more question, Mayor.
And I will do the same. If we get to where Dr. Orfeen says we need to do, I don't think there's anybody up here that's gonna take issue with that.
Dr. Orfeen, one more question. Are all the local facilities in Beaumont, Texas still doing elective surgeries?
Most of them, they are. There'll be time when they are not able to do elective surgery.
But specifically Baptist and St. Elizabeth?
Are they doing it, or they're not doing it?
Are they doing elective surgeries?
They are, at present, they are doing elective surgery, as far as my knowledge, but they are doing people who need urgent surgeries.
It's fluctuating, right?
Yeah, it's day-to-day thing. And truly, at hospitals, our first priority is, have been to take care of these people with COVID. These are small portion patients who go south super fast. So in terms of doing surgeries, all case-to-case basis, they're not, you know, people are not having cosmetic surgery in the hospital, one thing I know that. So...
Okay, Councilmember Getz, and then I'm gonna call for a vote.
Dr. Orfeen?
Dr. Orfeen, wait, please.
You're the most popular guy here today.
I look like it, huh?
Of course you always are.
In your opinion, is it safe for churches to open for in-person worship, given the severity of the situation that you've sat up here, that you stood here and described today? Is that a safe practice?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer. The, with all respect, you know, and we all are, you know, children of God, I believe, you know, the, those are places to worship, and we go there, take responsibility. And I believe God is in your heart, and you have, you, it's your own direct relationship with God, what happens, you know, to you. So I do not know if I can answer that question, that we should lock up the church, or should them open, or mosque, or, you know, or synagogue. That's you guys to decide. But I cannot tell you what to do. The thing which I'm here to tell you guys, what I do not want to see happening in the hospital.
And you're kind of making my point for me.
Yes, sir.
You can't really give us an answer on that question, any more than you can tell us an answer on... anymore than you can tell us an answer on whether it's safe to congregate at the event center. Because there's really no difference in these types of things. You're putting a lot of people in a room. So you're, you're really talking about the same thing. And I, I'm just pointing out the inconsistencies here. You, you can only tell us how bad your situation is at the hospital and your fear and your concerns of how it could get worse in the future. I got it. I, believe me, I understand that. But if you want to get serious about doing something, as, as I said a few minutes ago, you need to just shut it all down, which I don't think anybody up here is a proponent of, but maybe I'm wrong, I know I'm not. Or let us go forward and live our lives with the new normal, which includes these things, which I guess I should put on, but it sounds like I'm Charlie Brown's mother when I'm talking in it. And so this is the new normal. And social distancing is the new normal. One day, we're gonna have a vaccine. We will be able to whip this thing and hopefully sooner than later. But as for right now, I, well, I've, I've said enough.
Yeah, Mr. Gatz, you know, if it comes to the point, we may have to have a complete lockdown, you know? And we just have to look at this situation. We had this surge of July fourth, okay? The, from the time to you get infected with coronavirus, it takes you about three weeks to get, be on the ventilator. This is not a disease that your artery got blocked and you got a heart attack in next minute. This is a disease, you contract the virus, there's incubation phase, you have some mild symptom, and for some people, they continue to get worse and worse. So it's, there's a three week. So what are we gonna do today? We're gonna see the effect three weeks from now in the hospital. You know, it minus, you know, you may say you tested ten thousand people, you tested a hundred thousand people, half of them tested positive. Not worried about that much. But what I'm worried about, that we don't want to have too many positive people. We cannot avoid it, people will get infected. But what, we do not want to have more than X number of people coming at the hospital. That's all what we want to do. If it gets out of control, we may have to stop. We may have to have a complete lockdown, you know? We just have, and we were able to accomplish that at certain point. We had initial surge and the, we, the, you know, we, it slowed down. We had barely fifteen patient at one hospital. Total, less than thirty. And we were doing well until this recent surge in past three weeks, our hospital census have tripled. And we can't, we can't let this, you know, continue, you know? If we have, if we have twenty more patient in the hospital, I do not know how anybody would be able to take care of them. It won't be any hospital CEO unless we convert Event Center or Ford Park into hospital. And that's a fact, you know, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, just for the sake of the citizens, let me-
And I said, I said I was gonna call for a vote, but since you made the motion and you really haven't said much, oh, oh, wow.
Thank you. Uh, just for the sake of the citizens to understand the, the process we go through. Leaders try to make an informed decision. And the only way you can do that is to make a decision based on the information that's in front of you at the time. Now, on June the twenty-third, we voted to open up our facilities, let's say, August one. At that time, if I'm, if I remember correctly, our numbers were single-digit and we felt good about it and we felt like August would be a good time. Last Tuesday, July the twenty-first, Councilman Samuel and Robin Mouton were concerned about the numbers climbing and they made a motion to rescind that vote and to not open on August the first. At that time, I did not have enough information to change my vote. And so I voted no. With that said, let me read a statement to you so you'll understand what transpired from last Tuesday to today and what caused me to change my, my vote. "After voting last Tuesday to reopen the city's venues, I was contacted by eleven medical personnel, nine of which were physicians, asking me to please help them by revisiting this issue. It is my understanding, the main concern with our hospitals is not occupancy, but the number of caseloads on our medical personnel. Although I, like many, struggle with the contradictions and inconsistencies of the entire process of attempting to mitigate the pandemic, I cannot turn a deaf ear to the medical personnel of our community who are treating COVID-19 patients on a daily basis, putting their health and that of their families at risk. So with the pleading of our medical professionals, the rise of the COVID-19 cases and deaths, I join with Mayor Ames in asking this council to reconsider reopening the city facilities at this time." And Mayor, I do call for the question.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Clarification, Mayor.
Okay.
Is it the intent of the motion to continue the closure of the city facilities that are presently closed?
Yes, as read in item one.
Item one doesn't address the specifics of the building.
So you're just wanting to leave it as is?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe there was a second on that, wasn't there, Councilman Samuel? Okay, okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Point, point of clarification, Mayor. This proposed ordinance that was handed to us right before the meeting, I don't know if, if it's going to be amended further, but it says on page two, "It is hereby further amended to provide for the closure of the following city facilities." And it doesn't list those city facilities.
And that was, that was the request for the clarification, was the motion intended to continue the closure of the buildings that are presently closed?
Yes.
This will be filled in before the mayor signs it.
At the time this was-
Based upon the motion.
At the time this was done, he, we didn't have the information or know what the council was going to want to do. Okay, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, there is, the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Orfeen, Dr. Hancock. If y'all need to leave, please know that that's fine. Next item, please.
Mayor, I make a motion, we have a recess for five minutes. Yes.
Okay.
I would second that.
Three forty, twelve minutes? Is that long enough?
Yep.
Three forty-five, what do y'all want? Three forty? Three forty? Huh?
Back right. I'll call the meeting back to order and we've decided since we have so many people here for the first work session that we're going to move forward with it next and then move to item number two.
Mayor and Council, the first work session is to review and discuss the findings of the Phase One assessment of our sewer system and the presentation will be led by Lockwood, Andrews and Noonan who conducted the study.
Mayor, Council, Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. City Manager and City Staff, thank you for having us here today. What you'll see today is a report on our Phase One study. The partners on the thing were of course LAN, Cheekin Associates, our local partner, which was our boots on the ground here in Beaumont, and then the city of Beaumont. We consider staff was very favorable to work with and very appreciative of Bart and his group for everything that they have done to help us advance this. I think most of you know me, Russ Ford, but I've asked Charles Schumate and Kelly Shipley to come with me today. They'll take questions at the end, so if it turns into a cross-examination from either of you two attorneys, they're taking all the heat on this thing. I'm the happy guy. Andy Chika got called away. Andy was here and again their firm was a real benefit and asset to us on this thing. We'll go over real quickly. I'll try to make this as brief as possible for you. However, we want to discuss some key terms. Well, I'll introduce the project, what we did, and then in the end we'll summarize and we'll open it up for questions. What I would say to the council, if you've got a question on the presentation, ask it during the presentation. Feel free to interrupt me at any time. If it's a question about the study or the results of it or anything, I'd prefer you'd wait and ask Charles and Kelly about that at the end. So you'll see here a completed manhole. This is what we're looking for. This is the happy ending to some of these situations. The terms I wanted to make sure that the council remembered were inflow, which is water other than wastewater that enters the sewer system from drains, missing manhole covers, swamps, cross-connections with storm sewers. So inflow is a little different from infiltration. Infiltration, which we've got a high groundwater table here in Beaumont, I might add, basically comes in through a defect in the manhole, somewhere along that riser of the manhole. So those will be the things that we're talking about. If you'll notice at the end, a lot of times you'll hear that terminology referred to as fog or fats, oils and grease, but our group recognized that roots are also a significant problem in a city of this age with a sewer system that's got age on it. So we're going to call it frog instead of fog. With an introduction to the project, all of this is based on the Clean Water Act, which dates back to 1972. Our particular project resulted from an agreement between TCEQ and the city of Beaumont. Basically, it was a negotiation that you would be proactive and I'll say this about the city of Beaumont, you are proactive and we appreciate that. It makes for a really good client relationship. Our initiative began in 2017. I won't read down the items, but I'll just tell you that LAN had a role in the O and M program, the evaluation of your system, and then recommending renewal projects. Also, you'll see as we go through that record-keeping and reporting back to city staff was critical. You'll see there that we actually began this project on October 24th of 2017 and our goal was to have a three-year project. In other words, Phase One would be basically an evaluation and then we would go to Phase Two, which was modeling and smoke testing, and then Phase Three, which would build off of Phase Two with additional modeling and additional smoke testing as we got results. What has happened is, and I'm going to blame COVID on a part of this, but we've gotten pushed back and slowed down and we've been on hold for a period of time. So we're very much appreciative to our city manager for letting us make this presentation to you, which may indicate moving forward after we finish today. Our study area, which this is just a little redundant for council, you know what you've got here. I'll call your attention to the more than 9,500 manholes in the system and the city staff broke this down into fieldwork in five sub-areas with Phase One focused on the high-priority manholes within the sanitary sewer system. The city staff felt like the manholes were the problem child, if you will. So our primary task, I'm going to call your attention to the picture and try not to read you all the text. This picture is an indication of a manhole that was completely surrounded by brush and timber. Basically, they had to cut their way in to do the repair on this manhole. This is a finished product manhole. It's what, as I said earlier, what we'd like for the tops to look like. If you'll notice, the ring and cover is elevated above the flood zone and the fiberglass riser, if you will, is encapsulated in concrete, which makes it a lot easier to maintain around it where you don't break or tear the riser as you're doing your maintenance. Our focus on this primary task was basically to look at manholes. That's what Phase One became for your consultant, for us. What we did in this graphic on here was actually produced for this project. It was an inspection record and you'll actually see a picture of a manhole during the inspection process. What you'll see right there is the water stop that was taken out of it. You'll see the ring and cover, which is laid over to the side, and I think the manhole itself is right here. You'll notice that a lot of these manholes, if they were in traffic area, required traffic control during the thing. What we did is we popped the top on the manhole, did a data collection on it, and then we actually had a GIS system out there. I think they call it a grindle. Is my terminology good there? But a handheld GPS system, which gave us a locate on that, which we could carry back to the city and enter into your GIS system. Again, this is just showing that our sub-consultant, Chika, came up with some manhole identifiers. Each manhole was numbered differently and has a longitude and latitude where the city can go back in their records and not only do data entry, but they can also list a picture of it if they'd like to, so they'll know where to look for it and what to find. Because of this work, this fieldwork that was done, then our staff was able to go back and recommend either rehab or repair or even replacement of the manholes after we saw them. You can see that we focused, and this was at the city's request, but it's good engineering. We first focused within 6,000 feet of the wastewater treatment plant. If you look down at the bottom there, that's your wastewater treatment plant on the south side of town. In other words, the city felt like that was going to be, and I hate to use an old cliche, but low-hanging fruit or easy fixes for us, things that we could find and repair quickly that would make an impact in the system. We also looked very closely at the manholes along your 72-inch trunk line west. We felt like that was a good opportunity for us to, again, find the problems. And then we also inspected within 6,000 feet of any lift stations that discharged directly to the treatment plant or if they were within 100 feet of a waterway or connected siphon lines and/or forest mains. So, once you get in the field, it's never like you initially planned it. This is an indication of a manhole that's in the right-of-way, but basically it was behind somebody's fence. Those are the problems that you find every day when you're doing manhole inspection. Overall, we were tasked with doing about 2,400 manholes, I believe, and of those 2,400s, there were 22% of them that we couldn't even find. We were either unable to open the top on them or they were surcharged or underwater we couldn't access, or some could even be buried under pavement or buried underground. We did not spend time getting equipment out and looking at those. We inspected the ones that we could find.
What does surcharge mean?
Surcharge means that there was water, there was so much water in the line that it was actually rising up to the top of the manhole and coming over the top of the manhole, councilman. So you can't inspect the bottom of it when you can't see it because of water. So there was a percentage of them that were actually, a very small percentage, but that were surcharged.
I have a question.
Absolutely. You want to go back?
What do you do when they're in the inside of?
That was why we felt we were so fortunate having a local partner in this thing. A lot of times they could just ask the landowner. In other words, we had the right to go in there. It was in a city easement or right-of-way. However, you don't want to go behind someone's fence without their permission. So absolutely, having that local partner made it a lot easier because, councilman, they were able to be able to go and find a number of those. Okay, so this is...
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
All right, so we have 9,500 manholes in Beaumont.
In the system.
You tried to look for, at this first phase, look at 2,400.
Is that the correct number?
Right.
Yes, sir.
But 22% out of the 2,400 we didn't find.
That's right.
Okay.
And that, obviously, councilman, that's going to be prioritized by the director and say, okay, do we want to spend our money doing our smoke testing and doing our modeling now with the information we've got or do we want to go back in the next phase and spend some more money trying to locate those? And those are going to be hard locates, I might tell you, councilman, because a lot of times they're in areas. We didn't just give up, you know, at the first sign of an issue. These are tough.
So my question is back to the 2,400 that we originally looked for. How many of those were in good working order? Let me rephrase that. How many of them were in bad shape?
A very high percentage, councilman, and we'll answer that in questions at the end. But what I'm going to tell you is brick manholes were the standard manhole for a number of years in your system and they are problems.
You've got a lot of them.
You've got a lot of them. You really do. And we'll make Charles and Kelly give you some real numbers based on their findings, but it was a high percentage. It's, yes. Okay, on these manholes that we inspected, you'll see the dots here. The 2015 are the white dots. That was before we actually started on this, but that was work that was done before that you had recorded in your GIS system. The yellow ones were in 2016, so you had an ongoing program. We really got intense in 2017. Those are the blue dots, the green 2018. You'll see we did a whole bunch of them in 2018. And what I think is important here is that staff did not locate us in just one part of the city. I mean, if you'll see, that is citywide. We didn't, we went where there were problems, where there were reports of problems and where people had called in. And then 2019 is the light red or the pink, if you will. So there were three additional task orders after Task Order One. The manhole inspections were, we followed the priorities established by the city and then submitted to the staff. We submitted our recommendations to staff for implementation and repair. In other words, we prioritized that list for them or with them. Okay, so what we've completed in Task One, we started out along your five major trunk lines. The effort was expanded beyond that. We've got 100% of the manholes within the 6,000-foot radius around the plant and then we, as I told you earlier, we went on the 72-inch trunk main and then we looked for trunk lines near lift stations that discharged directly to the wastewater treatment plant. We addressed, excuse me, we addressed 100% of the first category and 59% of the expanded category. The remaining 41% will be addressed in future task orders. Okay, so this is showing what we completed. Basically, you'll see these are the manholes that have been inspected, found, and a number of them have actually been repaired. Bart and I discussed just prior to this meeting that they're over 50% on the repairs that they're doing on this thing. So you're making very good progress.
For the 9,500 or for the 2,400?
Of the 2,400.
Yeah, this is still Phase One.
This is Phase One, absolutely, councilman. Okay, so in other words, the left hand here is showing you where your trunk mains are and then the right is showing the manhole inspection, as we said, within proximity to the treatment plant. Okay, so as we discussed earlier in your question, councilman, a number of these manholes were brick manhole construction, which is a problem. You also have very high groundwater here in the city, which is an additional factor to be considered. And what we found was infiltration through cracks, joints, missing mortar in the manholes. And then we also found that sometimes covers had been removed completely or the cone sections were damaged. And then the last thing, which was of some concern, a very small percentage of these, which had been repaired, were not repaired properly. So we've reported that also to your staff. Oh, I needed to tell you before I switched to this one. The next slide is of a graphic nature. Avert your eyes if you don't like to see reality. But if you look here, what I'm going to call the center-left is basically showing poor construction and sediment and silt in the manhole. The upper-right there is showing manholes that have collected what our staff calls floatables, but basically items that entered into the sewer system, probably not through flushing, through some other manner, and basically completely stop up the system. And then if you look at this picture on the lower right, it gives a really good indication of a problem child. If you'll look, the flow in that manhole is not smooth or clear across the surfaces. You've got lines entering and some very unique angles and the manhole gets clogged easily. So this is one that needed repair desperately. Other conditions that we found out in the field, the left and right top pictures are the same manhole. That was a condition that we found in some of these things and they were brick manholes without a cover in addition to being hard to find. You'll see another example on the lower photograph there. Okay, this one basically shows a manhole that we found. This is a sinkhole area just to the lower right of that picture there. That is where you've got a failure of the soil around the manhole due to the leakage and infiltration. The upper picture is a picture of that actual manhole showing some of the problems that the joint, it doesn't have good joints around the pipes entering it and you can't see down at the bottom. I'm sorry because it's so deep, but there's water flowing in through the wall. In this next picture, the lower-right picture right here, you'll see it looks like a water park. Basically, water's pouring in from all sides on the ground. That's certainly a problem in your wastewater system. We did find that some of the, if you look at the picture on the left, that is a fiberglass riser, which is non-conductive and non-corrosive. However, because it wasn't protected, someone has either run into it with a mower or some piece of equipment and damaged it and that hole in the side, whenever you get a little bit of flooding, is going to pour water straight into that thing. So those are problems that are reported. On the right there shows a fiberglass liner that was installed in an existing manhole, which is a great repair. However, if you'll notice, down at the bottom, you can see that they didn't seal properly behind the liner, so it's still leaking. It's, in other words, we've still got infiltration at a manhole that should be almost watertight. And then just a quick word about cementitious liners. One of the repairs that you'll see a lot in the industry and it's fast and it's not as expensive, but they'll use a cementitious liner just to go back over the but they'll use a cementitious liner just to go back over those joints and everything. The problem with lining systems is that the host pipe has to be clean and dry. And getting it clean and dry in a live wastewater environment is rather challenging, al- almost impossible at times. So what I'm saying is liners are great if they work. A lot of times they don't, we found that they didn't. Uh, these are some pictures that were supplied to us by your city staff of some finished, uh, work that they've done, and, uh, my compliments, these, these are, these are watertight manholes that will last a long time. If we can keep, if we can keep the, uh, the, the rings and covers on there, then thi- this should serve the city for another fifty-plus years. So, in summary, um, first task order was smoke testing, uh, which we completed. And then the next four task orders were all manhole, uh, inspection contracts. Um, we were able to z- to observe, as we said, seventy-eight percent of those manholes that we'd identified of the twenty-four-hundred, uh, many high, uh, high priority, uh, sources and locations of I and I. And we also gave staff recommendation on corrective action. Uh, the beauty of this, and I'm going to give Bart all the credit here. He, he being a GIS person, they took this data and had entered it into their GIS system where they can use it. In other words, where they know where to, not only where to find that manhole, but what the condition is, and to prioritize the repair. They, as you know, they had, they haven't been able to repair all of them yet, but they're, they're doing it in, in order of, of what we needed. So, uh, that's a big deal. Uh, and then, uh, we, we've, uh, got, the city has, of course, prepared and placed contracts, uh, completed and ongoing city work. With that said, council, I would like for you to strongly consider that, uh, we are ready and willing to move forward, uh, as you deem necessary with this contract. Uh, we very much appreciate, uh, working with the city of Beaumont. And at that, I'd like to call my two associates up to answer specific questions. And councilman, I'm, we'll start with you if that's alright.
Sure. How many phases were we originally planning on doing this in? Three?
Three.
Okay. So what are we planning on doing with these twenty-two percent that we couldn't find or haven't found yet?
That would be between us and the city in, in deciding what work is highest priority in these next two phases. Now, what's tentatively scoped is, uh, flow monitoring and hydraulic modeling.
Okay. You have anything to say on that?
No, we, we're, we're aware of where those locations are, and, uh, staff should make a recommendation. We want to move forward with the second phase. We're working on the specifications and the deliverables.
Okay. Right now, and going back to whenever Dr. Maggiavani was here, one of the, one of the things we started talking about for the last, at least the last year that I've been here, is talking about how much groundwater gets into our sewer system, causing backup issues at the, at the main plant. Um, can we talk about those numbers for a minute? What, what is an average day that we have at the sewer treatment plant versus a day that it actually rains?
Molly or Mike, you want to come up? Molly Villarreal, our city engineer, and then Mike Harris, who raised his hand, the local water sewer repair.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, typically, on a normal day, dry weather day, fifteen to seventeen million gallons per day. Uh, and then in a rain event, we could see upwards of a hundred and fifty million gallons per day.
Okay.
A hundred and fifty.
So, right now, we have already completed roughly fifty percent of the manholes out of the, out of the seventy-eight percent that we found? Is that correct?
Yeah.
When do you think we'll have the other fifty percent done? Email, Joe?
Final?
I would assume within the next year or so, we've had trouble with contractors. Now, city crews are doing it, so.
What was that? You said you had trouble with the contractors, but what?
We're having-
City crews.
Oh, okay.
Work.
All right.
We're doing a lot of it in-house now. Uh, we've completed about a hundred and thirty-six manholes in-house when we had it ourselves, one crew.
Have you guys thought about adding additional crews in that our city staff to do this?
We've, uh, kicked it around a little bit, yes, but we haven't made any decisions.
Alright, kind of last question until some other people talk. How long is phase two going to take?
Planned a year. It, it would all be done in a similar period of time.
You have something, councilman?
Uh, thank you. Uh, the twenty-two percent, when you, I mean, you guys work all over. Uh, I mean, literally all over, not just all over southeast Texas, but all over. Uh, that twenty-two percent, is that high or low, uh, compared to some of the other projects that you guys have done?
Uh, that's about average. I think it's-
Okay, so, well, that's what, I want to have a baseline here, that when you say you couldn't find twenty-two percent, that's pretty standard if you were doing work in Chicago, for instance.
I mean, I think based on the, just the, the, um, topography of the area, I think twenty-two percent is, is-
Okay.
Councilman, to follow up on your question, what I think you really want to know is, with not finding twenty-two percent, when Charles starts his modeling, how does that affect the model? That's probably-
Well, and, yeah, you use information from planning profile drawings primarily, old construction drawings, record drawings.
Now, if appreciating that, what we're trying to accomplish here, how does it affect those areas? When you went in and had the, the issues that you had, number one, finding them, when it rains, how does that affect those areas where we haven't gone in and done the repairs, et cetera? Because, as we all know, it floods on occasion. I've heard, I, it's a rumor going around. And, uh, but how does it affect the other areas that we haven't addressed yet? I mean, we've got fifty-two of the, uh, seventy-eight percent, but in the other areas around the city, how does that affect them? And, uh, because, you know, obviously, once we've completed all this stuff, it should, I would hope it would make it better, but I think it's important for our citizens to know what you're working on and why. Because sometimes, if they just tune in, they go, what's a manhole cover got to do with my yard? How does it affect it?
And you have to make inferences or draw conclusions from what you have seen. And of course, the, the priority in the planning is to go look where you think the most, the problems are most likely to occur. So it is on the, the trunk lines. Well, and part of the evidence was, uh, just the timing, how quickly those peaks, that inflow as the rain, rain starts, reaches the plant and is observed there. And, you know, that's what leads you to believe that it's along the major trunk lines and not necessarily very far from the plant. It, it reaches there so quickly, so.
So, somebody's neighborhood where we hadn't had a chance to go in and, uh-
This, this still helps it, councilman. Whenever you, when you stop the surcharging of the system, it helps the entire system, so you bet. Good, good point.
Right, yeah, the, it's the hydraulics, yeah, it, that water backs up through the, through the system. So, yeah, solving one, or improving conditions in one area will improve things upstream.
Because that was one of the issues that people had, you know, after Harvey, people that didn't flood. And then when Imelda came in, they go, it didn't even rain, it didn't even get to us in Harvey, and all of a sudden, the water's up to here.
Right.
Yeah, but you're talking two different types of pollution.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstand what you're saying.
We're talking about, we're talking about sanitary sewer, wastewater.
Yeah.
Not, not storm, storm drains.
Oh. But they tie together. Let me, let me ask a question.
A lot of that stormwater does get in.
Yeah, let me tie, tie what you're, help me here. With city staff, they've thrown out that you can have perfect sewer lines, city sewer lines, mains, fix all these manholes, ninety-five-hundred of them. You're still going to have problems because of people's private lines that are compromised, and water getting in every time it rains. How much would you say that's fifty-fifty? Or what do you see across, I'm looking for maybe a percentage, and I want the council and the public to know, if the city had perfect lines, you're still going to have a lot of problems during heavy rain events.
Round numbers.
That you're not going to be able to.
Thirty, though, with, if you get the large- If you get the large diameter and, and you get the, the covers replaced, councilman, where it's not just pouring into your seventy-two-inch main, it's, it's going to be better, definitely.
But you think citizens are responsible for thirty percent, fifty percent? If you had to guess, I know every city's different.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a guess.
And it's also based on the age of your system as well. I mean, if you have, you know, a newer subdivision, PVC, you're okay.
You're in better shape, yeah.
Right, but if you're going with like the older sections where they maybe have cast iron or something else, then you're going to have roots and other issues that, yeah, it's beyond your, the city's responsibility to take care of, and then you do run into a lot of issues.
So what Molly's saying is, on those days with heavy rain events and you have over a hundred million gallons coming into the sewer treatment plant, yeah, the city's doing everything we can. That's why they're addressing the manholes, that's why we're replacing sewer lines across the city on an annual basis, as much as we can afford. But at the same time, you can do all that work, and I'm telling you, you're, it's going to make a, a difference, no doubt about it. You're still going to have issues. You surely don't want to bring over a hundred million gallons, if you can avoid that. But you're going to have infiltration into the system, again, because of people's private lines that probably need to be replaced. I used to be one of them. You'd have, you have a, if you can't flush the toilet at your house, it's because your line you should have replaced, and water gets in, fills it up, you can't flush your toilet. Sometimes it's our responsibility, sometimes it's the homeowner's responsibility. I sent y'all an email yesterday and showed the number of people that had called. We went out to every one of those calls and documented, how many of those were our responsibility? How many were theirs? Out of that seventy-some-odd number, mostly were on their side. So every situation's different. You have to go out to the home or business and make that determination before we jump to conclusions and think it's the city's fault.
Uh, I, I thought that number was about a fifty-fifty basis. You said mostly on, on the citizen's side.
The majority was on the city's side, my recollection.
It was like, what, what, I mean, it was, wasn't it close to fifty-fifty?
I'd have to go look at it. Again, my recollection-
Uh, the report I gave to manager, we had seventy-four sewer stoppage calls. Uh, twenty-six of the sewer stoppage calls were city issues, and forty-eight were calls that was a non-city issue.
Okay, so two-thirds.
So, that's your seventy-thirty, basically, that you were looking at. That just happened to be the stats for-
And that was in what period?
Yesterday, so.
And that was-
It varies, I'm just, we're trying to make the point. Is the city responsible for some of this? You bet. And we're trying to do everything we can to address it, and LAN has helped a lot. But don't jump to the conclusion that it's our fault every time. You have to go out case by case and make that determination. That's what we're doing now. Those, Councilman Neal's idea is start tracking this. We were tracking it, but not so much as the, we're tracking the address, but whose responsibility is it? And let's document that, and what it's proven up is, yeah, we, we all have a part to play in this.
Alright, so one more question. So, on an average day, we have between fifteen and seventeen million gallons that go to the treatment plant. On a heavy rain day, we have a hundred and fifty million gallons. What's the number that's putting us over the edge, that's calls in all the backup calls that we get? Is it forty million?
Depends on the neighborhood, depends on the location you live in across the city.
Alright, alright, so that's my question. I, and I know it's something, I, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but what are our options to do away with those phone calls that we get?
You're never going to get away with those phone calls, ever. No city gets away from those phone calls.
What can we do to slow those phone calls down?
What we're doing right now.
What can we do?
And SSOI.
What can we do more?
More of what we're doing right now.
Alright, let's talk about it. We got to do it, man, these phone calls are getting old.
I don't want to point out who voted against the budget this year, so.
I did.
Yeah, so if you want certain things, we got to pay for it, right?
Okay.
So, and if you're going to vote against something, bring a solution as to, are you willing to borrow another ten million, twenty million, thirty million? So that's what you have to think about, and where do you want that money to go? And for what? But, councilman, the people that have served up here for a long time, you're never going to get rid of those phone calls, ever.
Do you think we're getting more phone calls down than we ever have?
No.
Okay.
No way.
Getting less.
I do too.
I think we made a lot of improvements over the last ten, fifteen years.
Which is why I think it's so important to track the stuff you guys are tracking now so that we can prove that.
But, you know, too, out of seventy-four calls, the people who called probably thought it was the city problem until we went out. And so, just because they're calling doesn't mean that it's a, a city problem.
An education.
Yeah.
Yeah, they all think it's a city's problem. I mean, we have to show them it's not. That's why, it's, it's, we have to communicate and hone up to when it's our responsibility and make every effort to fix it. And then when it's not, we have the documentation to say, I'm sorry, but it's on your side.
Councilmember Neal and I toured the sewer plant, uh, earlier in the year, and at that time, we were told that the, during heavy rain events, that it was hard to process all of the, all of the fluid because it would get backed up, because I think there were some machinery or pumps that were out. Is that still the case? And if so, what's being done to alleviate that? And how does that, how does that cause the system out in the south end, where, where it originates with the treatment, to become charged all through the system so that it affects the rest of the city? How, could you explain how that all interacts?
That's more of a, my-
Yeah, my understanding is Imelda knocked out the main pumps, and I guess you're using some backup or rented pumps?
And the council's authorized us to buy new pumps, and we have a lot of work going on out there.
But not to get confused on pumps like they have in Port Arthur. There, a lot of people think we have those.
Exactly, but these are just pumps to run the plant.
Right. We don't have, we don't have pumps that pump water.
To, to answer your question, yes, the pumps are still out right now. Uh, the pump delivery has been pushed back several times, uh, because of COVID. The manufacturer, the manufacturers, the pumps, uh, they give us a delivery date, and, uh, when it gets close to that delivery date, they push it back another month. So, right now, the, the, the wet, the sewer plant is still on bypass, so it's not pumping at one hundred percent full capacity. Uh, I'm not exactly sure the numbers of what it's pumping at, you know, what's our capacity. It's close. Uh, I believe we, normal day, our, we could pump at a hundred and fifty, uh, MGDs, and I think we're about a hundred and twenty now.
Hey, Mike, step up to the microphone, we can hear you, but all these people that don't read lips.
So, what, what would it mean to the efficiencies of our system once these pumps are in place? And how would that translate into what the citizen can see that is having chronic concerns right now?
It would be a health. Once we get the pumps back in place, we can move more water through the sewer plant at a faster time. So therefore, the system will not build up as much.
And, and, and no idea when that's going to go on?
The last date we've got, I believe, was the end of, uh, August, end of October, on the, uh, pumps that they had works.
Mike, we've got one coming at the end of August, one October tenth.
That's right, the smaller pumps come at the end of August, but the large twenty MGD pump is pushed back to the end of October.
Any other question? Go ahead. Okay, Councilman Samuel is next, if you don't mind, please. You're going to let, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm kind of understanding. I've seen, uh, the transition over time. We, there were times that we had a lot of problems because of the age of the system itself.
Yes.
Uh, and the lines, there were, uh, uh, being infiltrated, ground infiltration, rather than the, uh, manhole infiltration as we're seeing now. So, that also kind of tracked along with the age of the city, as, as I understood it. Because that was a time that, uh, most of my, the calls that I would get would be over in the north end of Beaumont, uh, over in that area between Concord and Magnolia, uh, a little bit north of Delaware, uh, in that area, because that was where the older lines were. And as we continued to replace the lines, now we're seeing some of the lines that were newer lines in other areas such as, uh, more, uh, to the north, uh, north part of Beaumont, over in your war. That's why, is that why we've seen somewhat of a transition, uh, of?
Where are the calls?
I know where the calls are coming from.
Right.
And not only that, but now we're seeing because of the aging, uh, well, it's the aging of the entire system.
Yes.
And one of the things that we tried to do over time was to continually replace system lines and manholes, all of that at the same time, and try to maintain some budgetary restraint. Because we could not afford to do everything that we needed to do, uh, say, ten years ago.
And still here.
Uh, and so now that we are getting some of those things that should have been done fifteen years ago, now that they've been addressed, now we're having other areas that, where the growth continued to grow, to go.
Correct.
And now we're seeing some, we're now seeing some problems, more problems in west Beaumont, in the older west part of Beaumont, as opposed to the true west. In the older west part of Beaumont as opposed to the true west as they saw. So this has been an ongoing issue. We've always tried to uh maintain uh try not to increase taxes. That's been a major thing. Try not to get into excessive debt. But at the same time, continuing to better the system as we go forward. And now we're also dealing with the pumps.
Correct.
In addition to ground infiltration, infiltration, do manholes and those type of things.
Correct.
Exactly.
That is pretty much what we've been looking at over this time. And that's why we had the different phases of the project because at one time it was the actual pipes of the uh ground system.
Sure.
And now we caught up but not taken care of all. But now we're dealing with manholes and pumps.
Yes, sir. We're dealing with manholes and we still are dealing with some of the pipes in some of the locations. We still have a lot of concrete pipe uh that we're constantly changing uh with contracts. That's what these pipe bursting contracts that you guys look at. Uh, we're doing a lot with the in-house crews on changing out sewer sewer mains as well, you know.
That's what's going on in that north Helbig Road.
North, yes.
All that area.
Right.
Pipe bursting.
Correct. And also different areas of the city as well.
Getting rid of the concrete.
Old Town, yes, sir. Old Town's another area that we're working on. Westgate area. Uh, I believe we just about completed over by Blossom area. Um, like I said, so we're constantly working, taking these old lines out. It just takes time, you know. And now we got the manholes and we're trying to address the manholes. Um, because we've had some issues contractor wise with the manhole rehab. We put together a manhole rehab crew in-house. And like I said, they've they started towards the end of February, first part of March. Um, like I said, they started fresh and like I said, they're doing a a heck of a job. But they're they're getting them knocked out.
The other thing I I I want to make sure I'm correct in, and as I've told some people that asked, um, some of this work is kind of ugly right now, especially along Helbig Road.
Correct.
But that was a part, see, these the the sanitary sewer projects have to coordinate with some of the street maintenance. Road repair.
Correct.
Project because that's why it's so ugly down Helbig Road now. You see, it looks like a manhole is almost in the street.
Correct.
But that's all a part of the overall system that we're dealing with such like Delaware deal with uh water drainage as well as street maintenance.
We do try to uh and we do a good job of coordinating with streets and drainage and with the uh public works to get the list of streets that are fixing to be rehabbed so we can go over and see what condition the sanitary sewer's in as well as the water. To see if these things need to be changed out before the street come, you know, the street gets rehabbed because that's one thing we don't want, you know. Street gets rehabbed, water line breaks, we're digging the street back up, you know. It does happen. It's happened on occasion.
Happened on Helbig Road.
Right.
The new port by the fire station.
Uh, as a matter of fact, it happened about two weeks ago on Pine Street, right in front of the uh water plant, you know, they just redid that street. And of course, with the breaks that we were having, there's a six inch main broke right under that new street that they just replaced, you know. So it does happen, but we do try to coordinate to get this taken care of before it becomes an issue.
Since again, our focus is how fast can we do this because it affects our citizens. Now, we started this in October of twenty seventeen and it was supposed to be a three week, a three year project. What what do we need to do from our standpoint to move this forward as fast as we can for our citizens? Uh, I mean, sometimes projects slow down for whatever reason and, you know, COVID nineteen slowed down a lot of things. But what do we need to do from our perspective to kick it into uh the second, third phase? So that we can address everybody in the city, not just the uh twenty eight percent that we've covered so far.
Councilman, I I'm I'm saying this before vetting it with the city manager, but what I'll tell you is that we are ready to go with uh phase two and phase three whenever you get ready. And what that'll be, that'll be modeling and smoke testing uh of the system. And once we get all that information modeled, I think I'll let Charles address this, but I I believe that we can pinpoint areas that really need need the city's attention. So that's our that's our goal. Am I right, Charles?
Well, when you say pinpoint, yeah, that's one of those budgetary constraint questions again, uh about the quantity of flow monitoring you're able to do. So the more flow monitors you can put in, you decrease the size of sub bases you're monitoring. And you know, when flows increase across a meter, you know, you you can work at a smaller area to identify exactly where that's occurring.
How are y'all identifying where you're gonna focus first?
My approach would be to start really because it eliminates a lot of unknowns on upstream areas. But again, I don't know that Russ highlighted, you know, he he pointed out those major trunk lines. That's kind of the way we look at the system in in those major uh sub areas.
So you look to talk when you say.
But upstream along one of those trunk lines.
Tell me to understand exactly what upstream on the truck line, you gotta go to a picture.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's go back. Yeah, it doesn't show the entire system, but yeah, that should give the right idea. Yeah, so the uh we don't have our big display.
Are you all seeing it on your monitors?
No.
We're working on it. Well.
Thank goodness Bart's also an I T whiz kid. Bart does everything. I mean, there's no question about it.
We're gonna need some help on this one.
Oh.
It may just not be on the.
Is that what it is?
That it it could be an L A N problem.
There we go.
It's not on the city's side.
Yeah. That's right. Walks up and it's fixed.
They win.
You do them side by side.
This one?
Yeah, one more, yeah. So the the red lines here are the larger diameter lines or the trunk lines. And of course, we don't go out to the edge of the system, the periphery out here, but that that's where we're talking about. So just as a as a modeler, that would be my approach because it eliminates so many of the unknowns or uncertainties. Uh, you know, if you started at the plant, you're dealing with a much larger area where you have to try to make what you observe in the model match what folks in sit in the in Beaumont see in the field. So my preference would be to start upstream, smaller, you know, well-defined areas, fewer unknowns. And that way you you make your model batch what's really happening in the system.
You've indicated a number of times that land is ready and willing and able to start parts two and three. And uh I don't think I've heard today how much money we're talking about and where it is in the budget. Uh, where would it be coming from and what will we need to do? So can we address those two issues? What how how much money?
Approximately six hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's identified in the twenty five million dollars that you're gonna vote on here in a minute to pay for it, the second phase.
And would the third phase be about the same?
Yes.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Anything else, counsel? Okay. Thank y'all so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
You hit the uh.
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
We have it for you, yes.
So city manager, there's anybody else here that's waiting on something?
Not enough.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell in the back is is uh if we could do maybe items four and five, if that's okay with the council?
Okay.
Cause he's in he's in Houston as well.
Y'all ride together?
So we want to go on to four then when they?
If that's okay with the council.
Fine, yes. I don't think we care.
Four, five, and six, if that's okay.
Okay. Um, while they're lit um getting ready to leave, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with section five five one point zero seven two of the government code to wit. Specifically, city-owned property at three, four, five, five, Sarah Street.
Are y'all ready? If that's okay?
Sure, go ahead. Number four.
Mayor, council, item number four. You're going to have to bear with me. I have to read two long ordinances or the captions. The first is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Beaumont, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue and Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty eight in one or more series or sub-series as may be further designated. Authorizing each of the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer to approve the amounts, interest rates, prices, and terms thereof, and certain other matters relating to thereto. Providing for the payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements and authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more official statements and matters incident thereto. Awarding the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more bond purchase agreements, authorizing the defeasance, final payment and discharge of certain outstanding bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrowed securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of an escrow agent, authorizing bond insurance, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and other related documents and making other provisions regarding such bonds. This is what we do all day. Uh, the second ordinance I have to read, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Beaumont, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bonds taxable series twenty twenty B in one or more series or sub-series uh as may be further designated, authorizing each of the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer to approve the amounts, interest rates, prices, and terms thereof, and certain other matters relating thereto, providing for the payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements and authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more official statements and matters incident thereto. Awarding the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more bond purchase agreements, authorizing the defeasance, final payment and discharge of certain outstanding bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrowed securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of an escrow agent, authorizing bond insurance, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and other related documents and making other provisions regarding such bonds. As presented in a work session last week or maybe two weeks ago, the city plans to borrow twenty five million dollars to complete various water and sewer projects that are currently in the construction phase and to start new projects identified in the capital program. In addition, there's an estimated thirty two point three million of outstanding revenue bonds that can be refunded to achieve a lower interest rate and savings. The administration recommends approval. Derek Mitchell's here. He's our bond counsel. Destry Trailer was here within the last two weeks, our financial advisor. Todd Semino is our CFO. Tyrone Cooper, our city attorney. A lot of work goes into this. Uh, the administration recommends approval. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And that's all number four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion for number four?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second uh for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion or questions?
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, based on the 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 discussion that we had last week, uh assume we lock this in today, what kind of interest rate are we looking at?
Well, we're not going to lock it in today.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's how low can we go on this?
Well.
Two and a half?
Any other questions, comments? Yes, go ahead.
City manager, just just for the clarification for our citizens, when we use the verbiage revenue bonds that can be refunded, that word refunded can also mean refinance.
Yes.
Okay. And we're with because of the refinancing, you mentioned the twenty five million, but we do not expect any new taxes to be required for this.
What pays for this is water and sewer customers. Uh, the rates that they pay for water and sewer, which you approved in the code of ordinances. So last year, the mayor and council, uh as a whole, the city council increased water and sewer rates. We were thinking that we were gonna borrow money earlier than what we plan to do now in the next eight, thirty, sixty days. Um, a lot of things happened, COVID as we know, so uh as we are moving into fiscal year twenty twenty one and you'll consider the budget here in the next eight, thirty days, we do answer your question. We do not plan to recommend increasing any water and sewer rates and help pay for this.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number five, please.
Y'all wanna stay? You're gonna hear some long ordinances again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Y'all can leave. I was wondering why y'all were still here.
This hey, we normally charge, but.
Yeah. City clerk had a good question. I'll ask Mr. Cooper. They only needed to vote once, even though there were two ordinances involved.
They needed to vote on both of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we voted on the first one?
And the first one's identified, mayor and council is twenty twenty A, and then if you vote on twenty twenty B, I appreciate the city clerk.
Okay, is there a motion for uh the second ordinance, please?
So moved to approve.
And there is a second, please? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, was it council?
It was, yes. Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor and council, item number five. I'm gonna read two ordinances again. And we do this every couple of years when we borrow money or refinance uh various bond issues. So the first one is an ordinance, uh authorizing the issuance of the city of Beaumont, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty A in one or more series or sub-series as may be further designated. Authorizing each of the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer to approve the amounts, interest rates, prices, and terms thereof, and certain other matters relating to thereto. Providing for the payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements and authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more official statements and matters incident thereto. Awarding the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more bond purchase agreements, authorizing the defeasance, final payment and discharge of certain outstanding obligations, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrowed securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of an escrow agent, authorizing bond insurance, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and other related documents and making other provisions regarding such bonds. The last ordinance related to this item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Beaumont, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty B in one or more series or sub-series as may be further designated, authorizing each of the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer to approve the amounts, interest rates, prices, and terms thereof, and certain other matters relating thereto. Providing for the payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements and authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more official statements and matters incident thereto. Awarding the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more bond purchase agreements, authorizing the defeasance, final payment and discharge of certain outstanding obligations, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrowed securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of an escrow agent, authorizing bond insurance, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and other related documents and making other provisions regarding such bonds. Also presented in a work session within the last two weeks, there is an estimated one hundred and eleven point one million of outstanding general obligation certificates of obligation bonds that can be refunded in order to achieve a lower interest rate and savings. On that second page in the memorandum, those add those numbers add up uh to more than that one that one hundred eleven point one million that was done. $111.1 million that was done on purpose to give the, our financial advisor says to give us a little cushion, same people involved that worked really hard to get to this point, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you've heard the reading of number five, is there a motion on the first ordinance, please?
Major approved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the previous one, the water and sewer revenue bonds, the minimum savings thresholds are different, and I don't understand, that's why I'm asking. Can you answer that, Todd?
Sure.
So...
This is Derek Mitchell, our bond counsel.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So, with regard to the savings thresholds, it's what the, what the financial advisor expects. You asked earlier what the interest rates were going to be. So, your bonds, ten years ago, were issued at a certain rate, and so, let's just say it was 3% for one and 4% for the other. So, your savings today would be different on the different bonds.
One other question I had, the expiration of the authority is different by a month between the two of them.
It pretty much, you're going to give, you got a year's authority, it should be something like that. We should be issuing these in thirty, well, you should, we should issue the bonds, or you should deliver the money by October 15th.
Well, this one, we're not giving you a year authority, we're only giving you till December 31st.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I mean, either way, you're going to issue the debt by October. The idea is that, that what you issue today, we want to make sure that it doesn't become stale, so that's the idea. So, 31st is fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, there's a motion and a second for the first ordinance, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, is there a motion for the next ordinance?
Moved to approve.
So, motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously, and we need to do number six also?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council on number six is to consider resolution providing for the reimbursement of capital expenditures incurred prior to the closing of financing. The 2020 capital program includes ongoing water and sewer infrastructure improvements that will continue into the next fiscal year. And as of June the 30th, the Water Utilities Improvement Fund had a cash balance of just over $550,000. Bond proceeds will fund those ongoing infrastructure improvements, however, they will not be received for a few months. The reimbursement resolution is warranted to allow the city to reimburse itself out of the proceeds of the financing. The administration recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, council, is there a motion on this item, number six?
So moved to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and you want to go back up to number two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mayor and council on number two is an ordinance, entitled an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow the expansion of an air conditioning supply warehouse in a GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District at 980 North Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on July the 20th, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request, with four conditions that are listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same conditions.
Thank you, council, you've heard the reading of item number two, is there a motion on this item?
So moved with conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries also unanimously, item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a recreational vehicle, RV park, in an LI Light Industrial District at 5497 Fennett Road in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on July the 20th, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request, with one condition, the administration recommends approval with that one same condition.
Okay, thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of number three, is there a motion on this item?
So moved to approve with conditions.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's not a zone change too, so I only need one motion, just making sure. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, is there any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Uh huh.
The, the condition, the adequate detention base in per drainage district six requirements, do we have the authority to enforce what DD six requires?
I'll defer to the city attorney here, Mr. Boone.
I guess more importantly, is it even necessary to have this in here?
Well, it's a condition of the specific use permit, if they don't get authority and clearance from DD six, then they will not have satisfied the S U P, and it can be withdrawn.
But he wants to know, I guess you want to know, can DD six impose these requirements on the City of Beaumont?
Well, they're being imposed upon the RV park, and made a part of their specific use permit.
And if not, then DD six can reject it.
If they don't satisfy the requirements of DD six, they will let us know, and then we will address, or the council can address the specific use permit.
Okay.
All right, so let me ask the question a different way. Do we have the authority to put these restrictions on somebody? Does our, does our planning and zoning commission have the authority to put this restriction on somebody?
Specific use permits allows the council to put reasonable conditions on the property owner to satisfy, and satisfy the S U P and do what they need to do under the S U P.
Okay.
Some reasonable condition.
My only concern is, is that we're putting a requirement on something that we really don't want to get involved in and manage.
I understand where you're going, I agree with you. What happens is, depending on where development is and where they're bringing water, right?
To the basin?
Well, let's say they're bringing water, and I'm just talking about development in general in the City of Beaumont, but if you're bringing water to a detention facility or to an outfall that's owned by drainage district six, then they do have a say in it. So, and I know it gets complicated, but yes, they'd have a say because I don't know the particulars of this development, but oftentimes, if you're bringing water to their facilities that they own and maintain, they're going to be able to tell you what you're going to have to do, or how much you can bring and so forth. So, as you all know, the City of Beaumont, drainage district six, you know, it's a, every concrete ditch you see in the City of Beaumont is owned by drainage district six and maintained by them. The grass ditches you see are mostly ours, and the underground facilities that bring water to their facilities. So, to answer your question, and it's a good one, is, yes, they do have a say, especially if the developments bring water to their facilities.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, they have to get their approval, for example, on certain developments, if you're bringing water directly.
And, and I'm fine with them having to deal with DD six, but I don't want the city to be involved in something that we really don't want to be involved in.
We're not approving the DD six plan, we're only requiring the property owner to submit their plan and get it cleared by DD six.
Right, and so it's not uncommon for us to, for example, to say, let's say, a development is on a text dot highway or a text dot road like College, we might have a condition such that they need to, you know, go to text dot and get their approval for, say, a feeder road or curb cuts. It's something that they would require anyway, but we make it clear to the developer that we want it done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, there's a motion on, and a second on the floor for approval with the, for the specific use permit, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion, oh, is there any discussion, I'm sorry? The motion carries unanimously. Number seven, please.
Mayor and council on number seven is to consider resolution approving a contract for the purchase of sodium hydroxide for use by the Water Utilities Department. Sodium hydroxide is used to purify the city's water supply. The Water Utilities Department expects to purchase approximately 532 dry tons of this material during the term of the contract. DXI Industries Incorporated responded with a bid of $428.42 per ton, a total estimated amount of $227,919.44. Funds are available in the Water Utilities Fund, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you've heard the reading of item number seven. Is there a motion?
Major approved.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number eight, please.
Item number eight is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Playco Limited of Lumberton for the Astor Street lift station repairs. The contract will provide for the removal of the existing electrical panel and installation of a new elevated platform and new electrical equipment. The low bid is from Playco in the amount of $151,546.39. Total of 120 calendar days are allocated for the completion of the project. $101,647.43 will be paid by FEMA, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you have heard the reading of item number eight, is there a motion, please?
Major motion to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Mayor, because of relationship with the owner of this company, I must recuse myself from voting.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and with, all in favor, one refusal, yes, thank you. I'm getting tired. Number nine, please.
Mayor and council on number nine is to consider resolution approving a contract for the construction of a fence at the Tarot Park Botanical Garden Center. The city requested proposals for a new fixed knot and ornamental fence system to enclose the garden center complex to mitigate damage to the property by feral hogs. Bids were requested from 12 vendors, and two responses were received. The low qualified bid to complete the base bid was received from A1 Maida Beaumont in the amount of $65,500, with an alternate bid of $5,500 for the installation of approximately 1,643 linear feet of below grade hog barrier. The contractor will complete the base bid in 30 calendar days, or a total of 45 calendar days if the alternate bid is awarded. Funds are available in the Capital Reserve Fund, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you have heard the reading of number nine.
So moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead.
Is it the staff's recommendation to approve with the below grade hog barrier as well?
Would you recommend that, Keith, with being $5,500, I mean...
I think it's a good price, and I think it'd be a benefit, but if we're in budget constraints, I'd say no, but if we can, if we have the money budgeted for it, I'd say yes, it'd be a benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, what's your comments to that?
This project was not budgeted for, this was driven by the city council. However, I do agree and think we should do it, and I would do it with the alternate.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And we're going to go to the next work session?
Yes, ma'am. The work session, this work session is to review and discuss the operations of the water department. Quickly, the water department, it's $53 million operation this year, it's our largest department from a dollar standpoint. The city operates, as you know, and I'm saying some of this for the benefit of the public, the city operates a water plant that provides potable water to an estimated 120,000 residents, as well as to businesses and some industry. We operate a sewer treatment plant, that was discussed earlier. We have a water maintenance or repair division, and we also have a sewer maintenance repair division, and a quality control division. So, I'm going to introduce, y'all know Bart Barkowiac, he's our public works director. He is over the employees at the water plant. And Molly Villarreal is our city engineer, that quality control division reports to her. Bart and Molly work on the second floor here in city hall, very close to one another. Mike Harris, who you met here, just raised his hand, is our director over water and sewer repair, as well as the sewer treatment plant. So, a number of you, I've had, actually three council members probably have had a lot of questions over the last few weeks about, in particular, discolored water in some areas of town. That's the reason I went ahead and just put this on for a work session. The appropriate staff is here, I think we can answer pretty much any question you may have, and be happy to do so.
Okay. Council, anybody want to go first?
City manager, we know that here recently, there's been a number of emails and phone calls regarding brown water, and we know that there was, there's two components in that, one, because of water, water line breaks that can cause that, but then, there were some emails and phone calls addressing long-term problems with brown water that goes beyond those water breaks, could you speak to that?
Well, if citizens have ongoing issues, they need to call 311. We're tracking in the system the number of those calls, discolored water, and so, again, we're tracking it, we can go out to your home or business and flush the area if you're having ongoing problems. We're not aware of that many ongoing issues, most of the time, these are caused by when we have a number of breaks in the system, or, for example, when we were, during the early start of COVID, we were doing valve checks throughout the city and turning on and off valves, that created discolored water. And then with COVID, you know, some of you called me and it, you know, we said, look, you know, let's not do this at this time, because it does, you know, people don't feel good about when they turn on their, you know, their faucet and they have, you know, brown water coming out. So, but that does happen when you turn on and off valves and you're checking valves within the system, and we have a lot of valves, so we were being proactive there, but again, it was timing, and so we backed off of that. So, to answer your question, if citizens or businesses have brown water, then they need to call us, and that's part of what we do every day, we're going to go out and check it, and when it's our responsibility, we're going to flush the lines. Sometimes, you know, they have a bad water heater, you know, it's going to cause the problem. So, there's different ways our staff knows to, that they can do on their side, or will know, you know, did we have a break close by? You know, when firefighters fight a fire within a certain area, that creates problems with the pressure in the lines and sediment being stirred up. So, there's, to answer your question, though, we're going to go out to every call and make that determination.
Is there, was there any problems caused by the inspection done with the water tank on Dishman?
I think it added to some of the issues, low pressure in the west end, and then, we had a number of breaks, I think we had 41 breaks between July the 6th and July the 20th. So, within that two-week period, 41 breaks of various sizes, and we received 283 discolored water calls. So, depending on where you live, if you're close to where some of those breaks were, you're probably going to have issues, and then, again, certain areas, probably the west end, because of that tank being down, it's filled up again, but I think, yes, it did create additional issues.
And I'm sorry, one more question, and I'm...
No, no, please.
We did, if I remember correctly, we did an inspection, or there was an inspection that was required on that tank?
Yes.
And while we were going through the inspection, we decided to take advantage of that moment and do maintenance on that tank? Is that true?
Yes, our, our staff, and I think rightfully so, felt it was the right thing to do, we knew there were some issues in the tank, and that the time while it was drained was to go ahead and make those repairs.
And so, all those repairs were done?
Yes.
Can you tell us how extensive that was?
It was cleaning, we cleaned the tank.
Okay.
It was about 29...
It was about twenty-nine thousand dollars to go in and pressure wash the whole tank out, clean it, and then once we refilled, we did the back T test to prove the water was good, turned it back on.
And the tank was down for roughly how long?
Four weeks, I think.
Did the TCEQ or any other agency or engineer suggest or direct that the water tower that we're talking about needed to be attended to immediately, and so why?
The inspections are required periodically.
The, the inspection is required annually, and so there's also a process in draining and filling the tanks. You can't do it rapidly. So you have to, it, it takes, can take a matter of days in order to refill the tanks, in order to do it, because you don't wanna cause any pressures, you don't wanna cause more leaks due to pressure fluctuations in the system. So we had the tank down, we performed the inspection. The contractor was in the area working on another tank for us, as a matter of fact. So we had the situation where we needed to go ahead and make, do that cleaning, and they did. They mobilized very quickly as soon as we got the PO cut, and they did perform the cleaning. They performed it very thoroughly.
Okay, thank you. But the inspection itself, which you said is required to be done annually, why was the decision made to do this inspection in the summer months where water demand is highest as opposed to sometime in the, in the winter?
That could be a timing issue. Also too, it wasn't scheduled, we had a long period of damp rainy weather, a relatively cool spring, not a very hot summer, and starting within about the first week of July, the skies dried up, it quit raining, it got very hot very quickly, the weather changed. Our soils reacted to that very quickly. So we were still maintaining the flow demands that the citizens were using. We did not anticipate the weather to fluctuate the way that it did. It did, and so it, we, it didn't work out so great, but that's, it, it did need to be done.
Okay, and I appreciate that it needed to be done. Who, who makes the decision as to when we are going to do this annual inspection?
I think what he maybe, I don't, maybe the Public Works Director that, that wasn't here, and it's not his fault, but I guess what you're saying is, and maybe that's a good point, you wanna do all these inspections maybe in the wintertime if we can.
We can take a look at that, and we can try to shift to where.
Yeah, we have a number of, you know, above-ground storage tanks throughout the city, but maybe you have a good point, let's look at, look at doing it at one time a year. It's not, even if the, you know, that storage tank, the Dishman storage tank, let's say it wasn't down for repairs at all and cleaning, you still would've had discolored water, okay? And how much of that's attributable to the tank being down? Maybe some in the west end in certain pockets, but you would've still had the discolored water.
It didn't attribute anything to the discoloration, it just lowered our pressure. And that's what caused our problems with some lower pressure in the west.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, Bart, because it kind of leads me into question. Kyle, you just said a few minutes ago, in some way, the water tank being down attributed to, to some degree, the discoloration of the water. How? I mean, how, how does the paint tank being down?
I don't think that's what I said. Let me, let me try again. It does cause low pressure in certain areas of the city, and it did, but I wouldn't say discoloration.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
But low pressure, low pressure can create issues as well, but I would not talk about the discoloration and blame that on the Dishman tank being down.
I believe where the confusion comes in is I asked that question. That's what it was. Councilman Getz heard me ask that question. If the tank on Dishman caused, contributed to the brown water.
I believe I did.
And I thought his, his answer was in the affirmative, but maybe I misunderstood that. You indicated, Kyle, two hundred and eighty-three discolored water calls in the last couple of weeks. Do you have a sense for where those calls were coming from? Were they localized in any part of town, or are they all over the city?
I think all over the city.
Okay. You didn't see a, did you see a heavier than normal concentration of those calls from the west end?
This is Mike Harris, who's out in the field every day over water and sewer repair, and he can answer that better than I can.
Yes, the, the two hundred and eighty-three discolored water calls that we had, we get discolored water calls throughout the city every day in different areas, different locations because of, you know, such the widespread issues that we run into. The particular day that we got the majority of the discolored water calls was the Thursday, I don't remember the exact date, I believe seventeenth, sixteenth, when we had the water main on McFadden and Tenth break.
Okay.
It was twelve-inch water main, and it was connected straight to a twenty-inch trunk line that feeds the west end. So therefore, looking at the flow of water, the water's flowing from east to west, towards the west end. As soon as you put a twelve-inch gap in the size of that water main, the water's coming back. When that water reverses flow, that's what stirs up the discoloration. So yes, that particular day, we did have a lot of west end calls because of the reason of that trunk line being stirred up like it was.
Does the lobe wells being off for approximately three years since Hurricane Harvey affect water pressure, chlorine levels, or discoloration in any way, and if so, how?
As far as the lobe wells being off?
I mean, they were off for about three years, right?
Right, this was off about two, two and a half years.
Okay.
The lobe well being off has probably been a help as far as with chlorine and discoloration for the simple fact that, you know, as the guy brought in the work session a couple of weeks ago, discussing about the lobe well, the nitrification that we see when we turn the surface water mixed with the well water, it does create a chlorine issue. It's tougher to keep the chlorine residuals back up. So with the well turned off, it's easier to keep this chlorine residual, so therefore it's easier to keep the water cleaner, less discolored. But at the same time, you sacrifice a little pressure issues.
And I've got probably twenty questions or so, so I don't wanna monopolize the time here in that other council.
I think you should ask any and all questions.
Okay. And let me just say, Kyle, I appreciate you're putting this on for a work session because I think it's incredibly important for us to be transparent with the citizens. If we can answer their questions and give good answers to them, then we've gone a long way to eliminate some of the consternation that I'm hearing and seeing out there. Some of these questions are my own, some of them are, I've taken from citizens that have asked me and asked them. Councilmember Neil, did you have anything you wanted to ask before I get into?
No, I mean, I got a couple of things, and one, I wanna say I appreciate, you know, I spent about three hours with you guys one day last week, and I think we, we had some really good detailed conversations that taught me a lot about the systems. One of the questions that I hear constantly around town, and I know some of it's probably rumors, but I wanna get it out there, the flushing programs that we have here in Beaumont. Can you go into detail what we do, why we do that, and can we do it better, or do you think that what we're doing now is efficient or sufficient?
Of course, we can always do better. I mean, no matter what it is we're doing, we can always do something better, something more. We do have flushing program. We have up to last month, say about the, I think, middle of June, we've had three guys, they're called investigators. Their job is they go out, they investigate small leaks, or they investigate water leaks, determine the size of the leak, they take care of discolored water calls, they take care of the flushing, and they also take care of small meter repairs, things of that nature. We have added a fourth guy, it's not an, added an employee, but I moved an employee over from another part of the water department, so I actually have a fourth guy in there that's helping with the flushing and with the discolored water and water leaks. Like I said, it's been a big help. We're able to cover a bigger area with four people throughout the city instead of just three. To answer your question as far as about what we're doing with our flushing program, of course, we're required to flush all dead-end mains once a month, okay? So one of the guys, he takes care of all the dead-end mains. The other three guys, they take care of the discolored water issues, any of that come in. At the same time, they all have a route that they take weekly. They take this route, they've got a list where they need to go, flush outs they need to go to.
And that's the hundred and sixty items that y'all showed last week? Hundred and sixty locations, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Some of them are manual, as Mike's talking about.
Right.
Some of them are automatic.
And one of the things too, we've added probably in the last six months, five months, we've added thirty to thirty-five more flushing locations we've added to the system. We continue planning on adding more flushing locations in where we need them at, the worst to keep the, keep flushing. So like I said, I think our flushing system, our flushing program is better now. I think we do a better job, but like I said, we can always improve, always.
One other question before Councilman Getz jumps in there. All the water stuff is regulated by the TCEQ.
Correct.
How many times a day do we test our water?
The water is tested, bacterial testing, at least about eight times a day, Monday through Thursday, and they also take chlorine residuals Monday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they're just check chlorine residuals. We have our own lab at the water department, and we run, you know, it's a NELAC lab, so we're able to run our own back T samples. Of course, no one's there to run the samples on weekends, so that's why we wanna do it Monday through Thursday. But we're required a certain number of back T samples a month. Trying to remember what that number is, I believe it's about a hundred back T samples due to the population is what determines how many samples.
And then it's also tested approximately four times a day at the water plant, though it varies depending on levels. And then the chlorine residuals are tested in sample sites throughout the city.
Right.
Throughout the month as well. All that's reported to TCEQ, and it's all publicly posted.
All right, one other question. Pulling water out of the Neches River, we have, we fight with the manganese that's in the water, correct?
Correct.
And so basically, we treat that at the water treatment plant, and for lack of better turns, we dye the water back clear, right?
Correct. Well, I mean, not.
We drop the solids out of the water.
Okay, fair enough. But chemically, chemically, we change the color of the water to clear.
We, we put coagulants in the water to bond with the solids and drop them out of the water, and that's what gets it clear.
Okay, so my understanding is with the lobe plant being down, now we're pushing water farther in Beaumont than we have in years past. Sometimes if water sits in a system for, for, for longer than it used to, you're gonna see the brown water.
Correct.
Color or tint come back into the, into the system. Can you speak on that? Is that a true comment?
Yes, what happens is, like I said, we treat the water to sequester the mag- magnesium, not magnesium, sorry, manganese. We sequester it, you know, to keep it from oxidizing. Once it gets out in the system, of course, with water age, will, of course, you know, the sequester will start slowing down, wearing off, and then it starts oxidizing.
What can we do to help that?
More flushing.
Yeah.
More flushing.
So who is responsible for managing the manganese in the system and designing the flushing plan and managing that flushing operation? Is that you?
Designing and managing will be me.
Okay, all right. Moving back to the lobe wells for just a minute, you indicated two out of three things were good by having them offline. You indicated that our chlorine levels improved and our discoloration improved, and it might've had some small negative effect on water pressure. So why did it take so long to get the wells functioning again, and was it desirable to have them functioning again if two of the three things that are very important to citizens were actually improved with them being offline?
Can you, I'll try to answer your question, but I'm not sure I understand it.
Okay, well.
I can talk and just tell you that before Harvey, city of Beaumont was getting, let's just say roughly seventy-five percent of our water out of the Neches, okay? Twenty-five percent from the ground wells in Hardin County. So after Harvey, you know, our both pump stations knocked out, and when we started going one hundred percent out of the Neches and treating the water and pumping it to the city, you know, things, the water quality, like you said, was better. However, you still need lobe to be functional, especially to have redundancy, and especially until you possibly build this new plant in the west end. So I think it's important to have it as a backup. You know, we've talked about this before, but you have one main pipeline coming in from the Lawson Pump Station to our water plant. If that were to fail today, that's our worst fear. You wanna talk about transparency? That fails. That's why the council voted six to one to build a new pump station up there by the Beaumont Country Club on Pine Street. That's exactly why. So do you need lobe as a backup? Yes. If you had problems tonight and you couldn't pump water from Lawson's, we could pump water from lobe, not ideal circumstances, but you'd be able to pump water to the city. So the cost to make all those improvements at lobe was very expensive and still is today. So the predicament we've been in, meaning, how long did it take after Ike to get all the money from FEMA? Eleven years, right? So, but if they're gonna pay for seventy-five or eighty percent, or in some cases ninety percent, I think the council and the taxpayers would want us to pursue that instead of us having to pay one hundred percent of it and having to increase their water and sewer rates to pay for it. So that's why it, it doesn't happen in a timely manner, because we're hoping that FEMA and some other agencies are gonna pay for some of those improvements or most of them, and you have to follow their parameters and guidelines, and in some cases, you can't even start the engineering until they sign off on it. And we've talked about this many times, it may take ten years to get fully reimbursed. And our staff, we, you know, have to, you know, weigh that cost benefit analysis, make recommendations to you on what's really needed. Should we wait and, should we wait and see if we get FEMA approval? Should we move forward now, which takes your approval? And how does that affect rates? So there's just a lot at play. So just know those improvements, in our opinion, need to be made. At the same time, you know, pumping one hundred percent, you know, from Lawson's to our water plant is working right now. And I wanna answer some of your questions about discoloration. The fact of the matter is that most cities, I don't know of any cities that don't deal with this, and I have evidence I'll hand out to you of, I'll go through the list and just, you'll see for yourself. This isn't unique to Beaumont, Texas. This is something that we deal with every single summer, and you always will. And it's something you deal with in the wintertime during hard freezes, and you always will. What's different is social media, and what's different too is some of you follow it every day, which I get, I understand that. Let's, let's talk about what's really going on here. So again, I'd like to answer any questions you have, and let's, let's get them out there.
Well, again, talking about why it took so long to get the wells up and running, is part of your answer then, the regulatory scheme in order to get reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's a part of that.
Part of the councilman knows that it was completely underwater here. I mean, the Pine Street plant was not underwater. The pumping station on the river was mostly underwater, but some of the, the equipment was right on the surface, the tops of those pumps off the river, but everything at.
It was like eight, ten feet of water on the lobe site, so it knocked out everything.
Well motors, everything was out.
And we never had water on that site at all.
Okay. Again, trying to understand better, not just for my benefit but for citizens, how duties are determined and broken down in the water department. Obviously, Mike Harris is over that. Is, does he have someone under him that manages the repairs of breaks and determines how to flush the lines, or is that?
Well, he's the director, but yes, there's general foreman and key people in water repair and key people in sewer repair, and then we have someone who's a division manager over the sewer treatment plant that reports to Mike. And then because we have so much going on from Harvey and Amelda, you know, I didn't wanna load him up too much, and we were working on all of these FEMA projects and continuing to and will for years, is why Bart and Molly are over the water plant and. is why Bart and Molly are over the water plant and quality control. So, um, it's a, it's really a team effort. And all these folks, including Danette Mickens, who's over water customer service. I mean, there's a great group of individuals that work very well together and are moving these things forward. And I'm very pleased with all of them and what they've accomplished, even over the last, uh, three or four months since Dr. Majalani has, uh, moved over to Drainage District Six.
Could a flow chart be developed and distributed to council to kind of show?
If that's where you are now, yes.
I, I, I think it'd be helpful to just know names and duties and responsibilities.
That's going to a totally different level, but yes, you're entitled to it.
Um, what is a Class C water licensed employee? And how many of those do we have in our department?
Class C water licensed employee. Um, the way the licenses are arranged with T C E Q, uh, you have a Class A, which that's the top license. Uh, that's what a lot of the plant operators are, your head guy at the plants. Um, chief operators have will be As. Uh, of course, a step down is a B, step down is C. A C operator usually has, uh, two and a half to five years' experience in the system. Um, they go through sixty hours of training, classroom training. And once they do their sixty hours of classroom training, then they can go take a T C E Q test to receive a license. Uh, they do have a D water license, and of course, they have this in wastewater as well. And wastewater is actually even broke up a little more where you have a collections, one, two, and three license. Because your, uh, A, B, C, and D in wastewater deals mainly with just treatment to where your collections deal mainly with just out in the collection system.
Do you, do you target as a goal to have your supervisors have what type?
C license.
At least a C license.
C license, that's what we try to, uh, push for. Uh, I have several guys that does have C license. Um, I've, we've been pushing towards the goal of getting all the general foremen's with C license. But due to this, uh, to the COVID, I mean, you know, the restrictions, we haven't been able to have the classes. We haven't been able to go to the testing centers to test and, and things of that nature.
Aren't you certified to teach the classes?
I am, I, I do instruct, uh, the T C E Q classes as well.
Great, that, so, uh, uh, it's comforting to know that we have as a goal, uh,
Yes, sir.
Continuing education.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's something that we're always striving to do.
Yes, sir.
How many professional engineers are working at the water department?
P E certified or? The, the only two P E certified engineers we have at the present time are Molly as the city engineer, and then Brandon Belair in Public Works, uh, just got his P E. But we have a number of, of engineers working under Molly.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, or is this just?
Pretty much you.
Because I really hate to, you know, a- and again, this isn't just for my benefit. This is for the benefit of the public, this is for the benefit of citizens that have asked questions. Um, we have heard from some that a few years ago, when we were blending, uh, the well water and the river water, that it created a substance called, uh, dichloramines or trichloramines, uh, which can be problematic. Uh, is, is that a situation that we continue to have problems with when we blend these two waters?
The, the, uh, prior to us restarting lobe, we did used to run free chlorine on, out of lobe and what we call chloramines, which is a combination of chlorine and ammonia at Pine Street plant. And so you, that made the interface of the surface water, which is the nature's river water, and the groundwater that comes out of the wells, made that interface, uh, have problems, and we would lose the quality of the water where those two sources of water would meet. When we restarted lobe, we did run on chloramines. So we eliminated the different type of disinfections meeting together. And so that's where, uh, but we still have the water from lobe that, um, is, is being treated, is being treated with chloramines, even though we are temporarily shut off. Uh, we did see an issue with the quality of the water when this, when the summer heated up. Uh, we were having issues with the quality of the water, where the disinfectant residual that we go out, we measure in the system was starting to decline. This is something that we saw every year, we've always seen it since lobe has been online. Uh, prior, uh, uh, directors have attempted to solve this issue and had, had not been able to resolve it. Uh, we entered into a, uh, and other engineering firms have studied it in the past and had not been able to, uh, give us any guidance on how to resolve that issue. Uh, we're, we did, uh, engage a contract with Freece Nichols, who is the same engineer who's working with us on several other water production projects. And they, along with city staff, uh, we've not introduced John Pittens, he's in the back. He's our, uh, Water Utilities Design Manager, and he's one of four graduate engineers that are staffed at Water Utilities, uh, that we work with. And they're, they're located at Water Utilities to any assistance that Mike needs, uh, at a moment's notice. They are there, they work with each other constantly. And then, uh, if there's a, a larger issue, uh, I step in, but I'm also, we're constantly communicating daily on any questions or issues that come out throughout the system. But that aside, uh, John Pitten and his staff, uh, along with Freece Nichols, did an extensive, very extensive, the most detailed study I've seen done on our water system as to why the lobe water behaves a little bit differently from the Pine Street water. Uh, we're about, we're received, receiving right now the draft of that report, so we don't have any results, uh, to propose right now. Uh, but we think that we have eliminated a lot of the, uh, possibilities of why this is happening. And it may just be a, an issue that maybe it is the pH of the water that's being produced at lobe that is causing this, this difference. Uh, the level of the study that was done is much more sophisticated than anything I've seen come out yet that has looked at this. So I'm really anxious to see the results of that study, as are the rest of our staff.
I know water chemistry can be very tricky, yeah. I mean, anybody that has a swimming pool can tell you how tricky wa- water chemistry can be. And, uh, do you feel like this study is going to be able to give you a handle on the production of these, uh, uh, dichloramines and trichloramines? Or is it something that we might just have to accept as a phenomenon of that water? I mean, I, I know you can affect the pH of water by a- adding certain things to it. What, what is your thoughts looking down the road on this?
I don't know the exact purview of whether that we, we dove off into the disinfection byproducts, uh, how deeply they made that part of their study. Uh, as we are, as the focus of the study was to maintain the residual, the disinfectant residual to make sure the water is safe. But that's something that I will raise that question with Freece Nichols and ask him about it.
And for the rest of council, I don't anticipate going longer than another ten or fifteen minutes, just to kind of give you a, a framework of where I'm at. Um, I want to direct a question to the city manager. Uh, the, uh, I think you may have said back in twenty fifteen that the water department could be operated, uh, maybe at that time for forty-two million dollars a year, does that sound correct?
No.
Never said that?
Not that I recall, I don't remember a lot from five years ago, but.
Okay. Um, in the past, uh, five years, can you tell me, or someone tell me, how many fire hydrants the city has replaced and water valves the city's replaced?
No, we could probably get you that information.
Okay, and in terms of sewer lines?
You'll make a note.
And, and feet of, uh, pipe that have been cleaned, uh, can you get me that information as well?
We could.
And in terms of feet, and I, and I know that we have ongoing programs, and we've talked about it earlier today, about the things that we're doing to try to improve our system. Uh, how many feet of not just sewer lines and pipe have been cleaned, but how many feet of water lines has the city also changed out? If you could make that available to us as well. Um, and I take it from your prior comments, you believe that water department customer services are better today than they were five years ago? Is that a fair statement?
I didn't say that, but, uh.
Well, would you comment on it, please?
Yeah, I'm going to be careful what I say, because you're, you're asking a lot of questions that are involved in lawsuit right now that you're very familiar with, so.
Actually, I'm not totally familiar with what you're talking about.
Well, you're tying it into five years ago, and I think we all know. Um, so I'm going to be careful what I say as relates to that. I think we have very good customer service today, and I think the men and women that work in the water department overall are very, very good. I think the morale is the highest I've seen it. And I think you could ask Mike Harris, Bart Barcoiak, Molly Villarreal, John Pittens. So that's what I've seen and them telling me that. So I'm very pleased with where we are in the water department and what those men and women do every day in very difficult circumstances. Working, you know, today was, you know, was at a rain event, but when it's, you know, a hundred and ten degree heat index, and they're out there working very hard, uh, every day. And then we have employees on call every night. I think they do a, really an incredible job, and they make these repairs in a timely manner. Uh, they work extremely hard, and when they make the repairs in a timely manner, people don't have the discolored water for a lo- you know, for as long a period of time, so.
You know, I remember you and me talking, uh, in the past about problems that we've had with excessive overtime in the past under prior water department directors. How does overtime that we incur today compare with overtime that we had five years ago?
Yeah, I think the city attorney would advise me not to comment on that. I will say, we can get you those numbers, but it's much, much, much better than it was five, six, seven years ago.
You, you feel like we have overtime better under control now than we did five years ago?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, a question I have is, um, we had a water and sewer rate increase over a year ago, uh, charging the taxpayers additional fees for a bond cell to repair infrastructure. But that bond cell was just recently done. Why, why did we start a year ago, char- how does that work?
Well, I don't think anyone could have predicted COVID, um, and what that's done and how it slowed down projects. You borrow money on a cash, whenever you need additional cash, it's a cash flow issue. So you need to borrow money to continue to pay for projects that are in construction, in progress, or to start new projects, which is what you've done today. So no one could have predicted COVID nineteen. Uh, we needed that increase not only for operating expenses that were going up. You know, you look at, did we give our employees an increase last year? Yes, uh, healthcare, you know, related expenses on down the line. So it's a combination of those ongoing expenditures, needing additional monies to pay for debt service, like you did today, borrowing twenty-five million dollars. And I'll point out, out of this twenty-five million, there's five point nine million for sewer main rehab and, and, um, also six million dollars projected for sewer main rehab in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So, you know, that's twelve million dollars. That's the most I've seen ever by far. So there's a lot of good stuff in here, and, uh, I think we're trying to tackle, you know, the issues. You're, if you were to, could we spend a lot more? Yes, the council could decide, you know, you may want to borrow fifty million, seventy-five million. You haven't done that because of what it would do to water and sewer rates, right? So you have to increase rates that citizens are willing to pay for, know what they're getting when those rates increase. But to answer your question, it's, it's all based, we thought we were going to need this money earlier, and then COVID nineteen happened and, and moved some things back.
So have we built up a little bit of a cushion because we've had rate increases that we didn't have to spend the money on, or?
Um, it, it's put us in a position where we look at it on an annual basis every year. Do we need to increase rates? The good news is we don't need to increase rates, or we're not asking you to increase rates for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
Do we still have the weekend crews that go out on, uh, situations, uh, where there's emergencies?
Every night, every weekend.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Are there any other questions regarding the water department, council? Okay, I'm going to take a second.
I am going to hand out some information to, to you, and I want the public to know for those that, you know, are out on social media. I'm going to hand you something, this just happens to be from the city of Portland, Oregon. And, uh, it says, what causes a dirty water event? Sediment can be stirred up when the direction or, or flow of water changes in the water mains. Common causes include hydrant use, hydrant replacement, valve turning, routine maintenance, firefighting, main breaks, or nearby construction. That's the city of Portland. Then I'm going to hand you some information, these are articles that a staff member found online, and these aren't, uh, are not exhaustive. I mean, you can go find article after article. I'm pointing out that this is an article, Atlanta, Georgia, this is all within the last year, year and a half. Atlanta, not that, not that, look, we've had discolored water at our home, no one wants that. I mean, but it's not, I don't want you to leave this meeting or residents who are watching this to think this problem is something that you can cure. You cannot, you're always going to have discolored water mostly. Most of the time, it's because of water breaks, okay? But this is Atlanta, Georgia, August twenty nineteen, it's the furthest one back, and most of them are recent. But the headline is, residents report discolored drinking water in the city of Atlanta. Cleveland, Ohio, last year, discolored water is safe to drink for residents. Na, 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 water worries, this is interesting headline, water worries irk five town residents. Five town residents, this was Long Island, New York, late last year. Seattle, Washington, brown water, what to do if it happens to you? Connecticut, this is just in June this year, in Connecticut. Regional Water Authority warning people to beware of discolored water. Albany, New York, Albany Water Department Maintenance could cause temporary water discoloration. New Haven, Connecticut, New Haven residents raised concerns over brown water. San Diego, California, December of last year. I'm still drinking it, na, 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 they had lifted a boil water advisory, the mayor said. I'm still drinking it, sounds like a mayor promoting your city. Um, we all know, what I'm trying to say is this is not unique to Beaumont at all. Across the country, west coast, east coast, it happens. Our staff does an excellent job, so you don't see it, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, right? But there are times you will, and number one, did we, did, were we responsible for it? Were we turning on and off valves, doing routine maintenance? Did we have a break, you know, within your house, you know, close proximity to your house or business? Or it happens, trust me, he goes out or his staff does, and they have a problem with their water heater. You know, that needs to be changed out, and when they're turning on the hot water, it's, uh, sending dirty water through their faucets. So there's just a lot to it, I'm going to leave you with these articles. Appreciate you, uh, you know, again, go ahead and get all the questions out there. Uh, it's better to tackle them head on and talk through it.
But I agree with that, one, one other question, because this always riles me to some extent. I see sometimes citizens talk derisively about our water and say it's like Flint, Michigan. It's, as I understand, nothing at all like the situation that happened in Flint, Michigan with lead in their water. Uh, that it's, it's a very different thing, and I, I appreciate openness and candor and transparency. And would urge that we continue to try to do that to answer these questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we have another work session, correct?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and Council, uh, Bart Barcoiak's going to come forward. Uh, we'd like to talk to you about making application to FEMA for what are known as, uh, direct administrative costs. A lot of people refer to that as DAC, and this relates to Hurricane Harvey or Tropical Storm Harvey, direct administrative costs. He's going to walk you through, uh, what funds we think are available and how we would propose to spend those funds and, and want to get your buy-in before we make application.
Good evening, rather than afternoon. I'll try to keep this fairly, fairly clean. During certain federally declared disasters, administrative costs directly involving recovery efforts by employees are eligible for reimbursement. Normally, this time is calculated separately for each project. However, following Superstorm Sandy's impact on the northeast, FEMA established a pilot program to simplify and reduce the administrative burden on all parties by allocating 4% of total federal funding awarded to the jurisdiction as an additional allocation to cover administrative costs. Upon completion of the project repairs, an additional 1% of the total allocation is awarded. This option was offered for Hurricane Harvey for direct administrative costs, or DAC, which covers payroll time for working directly on Harvey-related projects. Now, Beaumont has 69 projects ongoing with FEMA, currently obligating about $68.8 million. Several projects have not yet been obligated, and some additional funding is likely. However, at this time, approximately $2.7 million is available under DAC for us. This is 100%, no matching on this. So staff would like to apply for DAC funding for a number of projects. These projects, to kind of simplify things, these projects need to basically be mitigation-type projects related to preventative measures or improving things for a future event. So on the list are money for updating the Atlas 14 numbers for the master drainage study, as well as getting LAN's help as part of that to help us apply for a large river diversion project as part of that Harvey Round 2 funding, to try to take advantage of that. Approximately $110,000 for payroll reimbursement for administrative costs, and that's on us working on these Harvey projects. $10,000 for a sandbagging machine. We keep having these flood events. If we have to hand out sandbags, it's very labor-intensive. This will make it easy. $37,000 for personal flotation devices for first responders, directly responding in flood events. $500,000 for some additional caustic storage tanks at the Pine Street plant. Right now, we have two of them, and part of TCQ recommendations that we expand the amount of chemical we have on hand. That'll give us more capacity until we have to have future deliveries. Approximately $200,000 for a mixer for the Dishman Storage Tank. Originally, when that tank was put in, it's a very large tank. It was planned for additional development on the west end, and it was originally supposed to have a mixer installed as part of that tank being implemented. That never really happened. We do need to put that in. That will help mix the water. We're just not drawing enough off that tank quite yet, so that'll help on water quality. Additional $250,000 to upgrade SCADA systems at Loeb. We put in for a lot of work due to the Harvey damages, but the SCADA work we're asking for here was not incorporated within those previous FEMA projects. And then $400,000 to rehabilitate those two Loeb water storage tanks. There's one concrete, one steel tank. This will get us to another five to seven years. Hopefully, we'll get funding for that west end water treatment plant, but we need this investment for those tanks to hold us until that point in time. All of these are directly related to mitigation, and again, 100% funded, so.
Okay, so this is an action item next, so council, any questions?
On the sandbagging machine, so do we, as a city, distribute sandbags when we're facing an imminent threat? I've been told in the past that we don't, that you can get sandbags from the county, but do we do it as a city?
We haven't.
At different times.
Yeah, we haven't. We have it sometimes, but when that storm was coming earlier this summer, we had to prep to hand out sandbags. I believe, you know, it was deemed a good thing to hand them out to the citizens, so.
That's me.
Yeah. This attaches to a skid steer. So instead of having a big pile of sand and having individual citizens fill the bags or staffing it with our employees to try to fill individual bags, this thing attaches to a skid steer. It scoops up the sand, drops it into the bags. You pull a lever, all the bags close up, and then you put no more bags on the machine. You do a lot of them in a short time, so.
In the future, once we obtain this, where will citizens go to pick up their sandbags?
I don't know if it'll stay this way, but when we were planning for it earlier this summer, we were gonna do it out of the athletic complex off of college. We've got room there, and it, good traffic flow in and out. We felt that was a good spot.
I don't want people to hear and think that that's what something we typically do.
It was tentative.
Based on what's happening, what's coming, and that kind of thing. So it's not, we did that this last summer because of a lot of different situations that were going on at the same time. And so that doesn't mean that we always will. That'll be a decision that it's usually made by the administration, by the management.
As needed.
But I'm guessing, though, that if we buy the machine, that if we're faced with apparel, that.
But we haven't bought the machine, have we?
It was part of this.
Oh, that, okay.
It would be an attachment to a skid steer we already own that would make it possible. That way, y'all's call, administration's call, but if we have to put out sandbags, we can do them quickly.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it kind of depends on what's going on, because the count, the staff, you know, we really want them to be doing certain things before, too. So when we gave them out with, I'm trying to think, with Harvey, when we gave them out, it took a lot of manpower to do it.
And we wanted to concentrate on ditching and jetting out coverts. And so this is a goal, to keep it as low manpower-intensive as we can if we have to hand them out.
Anything else, council, for Bart?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and so that concludes this work session, and it is an action item now. So do you need to read the caption?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council item number 10 is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to make application to FEMA for Hurricane Harvey direct administrative costs. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard that reading of item number 10. Is there a motion, please?
Some are different.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And that concludes this meeting, except for executive session. So I will open up the microphone now. Is there anyone still here? Yes, okay.
I hope I have three.
Sorry, sir. Yes. Yes, public comment. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make public comment today. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. So I have Steve Hoffman, 7045 Blarney Street, Beaumont, Texas. We'll see if he's still here. Yes, sir. How are you?
How you doing? Steve Hoffman, 7045 Blarney Street, Beaumont, Texas. Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and the council. Why I came was, when y'all, some of the things you've talked about, you know, with the water issues, the water pressure, brown water. Being on the social media a lot, I was seeing a lot of that information. And I tried to talk to neighbors and said, "Brown water is not so bad." Some years back, in the Harvey, Joe Mascherini convinced me that brown water, properly coordinated, is potable, and therefore, it could be used. But people are afraid of something that's not regular. So I understand that. Excuse me, I had a medical condition, it caused me to pan a little bit. Unusual. Thank you, ma'am.
It's hard to talk in the mask, I know.
I know. And so anyway, but what I did notice was that the people are concerned, like the water pressure. They're kind of like wondering in the wilderness. They can't, they don't feel, they cough, cough information. They don't feel like they're getting quite satisfied answers, satisfactory answers, you know. And then I tried to find them at the right place. Said, "Well, if you don't think 311's quite doing it, call 311 and ask them to have you put to the water department and talk direct." You know, just something to get them satisfied, because I keep remembering when I worked at Energy, and the big thing was, you know, perceptions are real. And with the public, it's real. And it's gonna be coming off social media. Much as y'all hate that stuff, it's real. And it's something you have to live with. I mean, my view is, let's get the, let's get the social media as accurate as we can. Cut the BS, cut the I knows and they don't know, and get it back. I would spend a lot of my time trying to get people to understand what's real and what's the right thing. Here's the right information. People are not dumb. They can make good decisions. You know, and that's my goal. What I do ask is, the city hasn't always, in my view, been very good at communicating. You know, and like the water tower, cleaning the water tower, you knew it was gonna have some pressure implications. So if you knew that, why not put out a press release? Get it out in the media to have, put it on the, like, the 6 o'clock news saying, "You might anticipate having water problems." So they know what's coming down. I mean, when I was being taught, when I was handling the executives, they taught us, when you deal with somebody in that power level, what you do is, you tell them the bad news, but you tell them it's coming. So they're not gonna like it. But that's better than them finding out the hard way, because then they're gonna be bad, and then it gets really bad. And that the public feels like they're not being told, they're gonna be mad. So my view is, you know, it's called transparency now, but it's kind of like the Vogue word, you know. And my view is, it's just a, it's smart. It's a smart way to communicate, and it's not that hard. But I mean, we got good engineers, we got good people working here. I know Molly, she's a lot of people, and I mean, they do good work. So they know when these things are coming. So the idea is, was you just gotta get it out of the building and over to the people. And I think everybody'd be happier for it, and it'll be, gonna be good for the city. That's just my view.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. I'm gonna make it a note that you are running a record meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, if there's no other citizen who wishes to speak, move to council member comments. Don't talk long. We have a lot to do. Okay, so I think I started over here, so I'll start with you, Councilman Neill.
Who's coming, Mayor?
Councilman Getz.
Steve Hoffman stole my thunder, because you commented and said exactly what I wanted to say in my council member comments. Citizens can handle a lot if we prep them and tell them that it's coming. We have the ability to communicate with citizens when we know something bad's about to happen. When we have a water main the size of the one that blew out at 10th and McBadden, it can be reasonably anticipated that we're gonna have discoloration of water as a result. When we take the water tower out of service, it can be reasonably anticipated that we're gonna have a drop in water pressure. It would be real easy to use social media for good and to try to explain to citizens, "You might expect this," and I would encourage, would encourage the administration to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor. Because we don't know how long the COVID-19 is going to last, let me just make a brief comment. I believe every member of this council, the city staff, medical personnel, and the majority of our community are concerned with the health and the well-being of our citizens. There may be different opinions of how we mitigate the pandemic, but we must remind ourselves to stay unified in our defeat of it. There are two viruses in our community. One being the COVID-19, and the second is the entrenching, divisive, and sometimes unyielding attitude that is tearing at the very fabric of our community. Family and friends are being divided over masks, social distancing, the reporting of numbers, and yes, the opening and closing of venues. Healthy debate is good, and healthy debate is right. But we must agree to disagree without vilifying our neighbors. Let us make sure we live through the pandemic and are able to live with each other after it's over. Thank you, Mayor.
Very nice, thank you. Councilman Pate.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protim mentioned leadership. Leadership is the ability to get people to do what you want them to do because they want to do it. And we need to keep that in mind. I'd like to take credit for that, but that was actually General Dwight D. Eisenhower, who became the president. We're gonna look at data. We're not always gonna interpret it the same way, but we need to make sure that we're looking at the same thing, so that when we make a decision, we can say, "Okay, we get here, then we're gonna do this." Otherwise, if you don't have some goal out there or some objective, you're just wasting your time. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. To me, you look at, you look at the facts. As an Army Colonel, I taught leadership, the United States Army Command General Staff College. I know what it is. I know how important it is. But we have got to, part of that is being able to know what we're looking for, and then when we see it, we do the right thing. And like the Mayor Protim said, we're all gonna work together. We're not always gonna agree, but we need to understand that there are gonna be some disagreements unless there's some objective upon which we can focus, and it can't just be nebulous. And I'm gonna continue to push for that so that we can get things back like they should be as safely as they can be. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Maitan.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to have the moment of silence for House Representative John Lewis, salute his life and legacy. Would like to also thank Dr. Arfin and Dr. Hancock, who came up and gave their heartfelt expressions of what they deal with as doctors on a daily basis for what's happening in our community and our hospital. And I really appreciate the information that they gave us from an inside view of what they go through on a daily basis. You know, we hear of the doctors on the front line and nurses and what they do on a daily basis, but just hearing it from the doctors that are actually working there and doing it every day, my prayers go out to them. Also, giving condolences to Coach Andrew Washington. And also, every night CNN features COVID victims. And last week, CNN recognized the impact of Reverend Vicki Gibbs, who's a native Beaumanner that lives in Houston. She was a minister in Houston, but went to school here in Beaumont. And I want to send condolences to her family. And also to Dorothy Lindsey, Erin Taylor, and Mr. Willis Jackson. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Regarding COVID, I always try to say where we are at this meeting, and I did get a text earlier that we got, we had three more deaths today, unfortunately. So that's very unfortunate. In addition, I just want to, as I do every week, remind everyone, if you haven't filled out the census, please do so. You can still do it online. It's imperative to what we are doing and what we're going to do in the future. So if you haven't done it, please do. And I just want to say that we have had two council members that talked about divisiveness and working together. I just think that we need to try hard to work together and not be attacking of each other. And I also believe in leadership, but I really, I too believe, when I was thinking about it, as everyone was talking, is that leadership sometimes takes the courage to do what might not be popular, but you do it to protect yourself and the future, meaning our children. And I truly believe that, and we're going to get through this. But if you look at other countries who have really shut down and done the things that they're being told to do, they have got past it much quicker. So with that said, we will now recess into executive session. Thank y'all for coming.